I'd like to call this meeting to order at eight thirty one A M. This meeting is being conducted in accordance with State of California Executive Order N dash twenty nine dash twenty, dated March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty. All members of the City Council are participating in this meeting by video conference with no physical meeting location. As noted on the meeting agenda, members of the public may provide oral public comments online during the public comment period for an item by signing up at mountainview dot G O V backslash C C underscore speakers or by dialing or by dialing by phone six six nine nine zero zero nine one two eight and entering webinar I D nine seven five four four three nine eight two five one. And we'll move on to item number two, which is roll call. We'll have the interim city clerk, Ms. Fonderlin, on call roll.
Also member Abby Koga.
Here.
Council member Hicks.
Here.
Council member Lever.
Here.
Council member Manachak.
Here.
Council member Showalter.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ramirez.
Here.
Mayor Kamay.
Here.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. So we'll move on to item number three, which is all communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed to speak on any topic for up to three minutes during this section. If there appears to be a large number of speakers, speaking time may reduced, may be reduced to no less than a minute and a half. State law prohibits the council from acting on items that are not on the agenda. Would any member of the public like to provide comment on an item that is not on the agenda? If so, please click the blue raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. Alright, I see one hand. And Ms. Fonderlin, do you have the timer set to go for three minutes? Alright, alright, Mr. Carney, go ahead.
Good morning. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you all, and I wish you the best of luck throughout your meeting this morning. The reason I'm phoning in and I'll, I'll touch back in around eleven o'clock as well is I just wanted to highlight what I perceive is the, the real urgency of addressing climate change issues in Mountain View. As all of you know, Mountain View has an excellent track record of leadership at the local level. The actions that Mountain View has taken over the past several years, including joining, actually starting Silicon Valley Clean Energy, the early adoption of a strong reach code have inspired other cities to do things that they would not have done without Mountain View's leadership. And yet, as we've seen through the eighty degree temperatures in January just a few weeks ago, the dark orange skies of September ninth last year, the looming drought. Climate has got to be a top priority in everyone's mind. The pace at which government moves is often perceived even by those involved in the process as being slow, and yet, climate change demands rapid adoption of significantly changed behaviors. And all this being done in the midst of a pandemic and a recession. I don't envy you the task that lies before you, but I'm confident that you all have the background and the capabilities and the willingness to do what is necessary to make Mountain View the shining beacon that will lead other cities in our state and other states in our country toward a more sustainable future. And in that endeavor, I absolutely offer my help, one hundred percent of my commitment and my applause for the things that I know that you'll be able to accomplish. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else wishing to give public comment? Alright, I don't see any other hands raised, so we'll move on to item four, which is our City Council Retreat. So I'd like to welcome everyone to our virtual council retreat. This retreat has two parts. With item four point one, we'll be focused on team building, and item four point two, we will be focused on strategic planning. For each item, the council will be joined by a facilitator who will start with a brief presentation providing background information, followed by a facilitated council discussion for each item. And so before each item, we will take public comment after the background information is presented. We will also have a break between items four point one and four point two. So I'm looking forward to a positive and constructive retreat, and I will turn it over to Mister, oh, to, sorry, to Mister Greg Larson, who will, with Management Partners, who will be starting our team building section, but I think even before I turn it over to Greg, I'm going to turn it over to our city manager, Kimber McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, council members. I just wanted to welcome you to our first and hopefully last virtual retreat. I know that usually we look forward to having these at one of our amazing city facilities, and so we do have a great retreat for you planned. As the mayor said, it's going to start by a facilitated discussion from Mister Larson, taking us through the first couple hours on communication styles and team building and really focusing on the council. And then the second part of the retreat is going to be about our strategic planning efforts and really thinking about where Mountain View wants to head in the future. So our mission and our vision and thinking about our strategic priorities, which we call our major goals. And then we have several months' worth of other dialogue with the community and also with staff and of course with council. So I'm looking forward to this morning, and I will close there and then turn it over to Mister Larson.
Greg, you're, you're on mute.
Sure, thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor and City Manager, for that introduction into the council, for dedicating your time to this important work you're doing in both halves of the workshop, and also to the residents of Mountain View who care so much about your continued excellent service to the community. I am Greg Larson and a partner with Management Partners. I will be sharing my screen periodically here during the presentation. I am a retired city manager of Los Gatos and Mel Pitas and Deputy City Manager of San Jose, and also worked as President of United Way Silicon Valley. For the last three years, I've had the joy of working with cities, and city councils in particular throughout Northern California on team building, priority setting, and evaluation of staff. And I just feel it's my life mission now to help cities be as effective as possible, and that requires supporting the elected officials in their important work. And so with that, I am going to quickly jump into the slide. And first, we've already done the opening comments from the mayor and manager. I did want to do the brief overview of the workshop that was identified by the mayor. Well, we've actually set four objectives for this retreat. To this morning's workshop, to strengthen city council communications and relationships, to understand city council roles and best practices, to provide direction on updating the city council norms, and to set expectations for council email management. And so you'll see each of these reflected in the agenda for this morning. And we have a workshop, a workshop outline that was previously distributed. The numbers that you'll be seeing during the course of this presentation reflect the numbers on the discussion outline that was previously disseminated. Opening comments are done, and they'll soon be done with the workshop overview. The next section following public comment will be to celebrate recent accomplishments and to present to city council the results of the communication style assessment exercise that you each participated in along with the city manager and city attorney. Then we're going to get to the meat of the workshop, which is the city council roles and responsibilities, to review the city council's assessment of their own self-governance, to review the city council norms, to identify if there's any changes needed to those as the council continues to involve them. Then we'll have a separate section on the city council email management discussion that was requested and do a quick wrap up and next steps. I will say this is a very aggressive agenda. Our goal is to be done by ten thirty, so that the mayor and council and public have a break prior to the eleven o'clock strategic planning session. So a little bit of my role is going to be a timekeeper here throughout the workshop. And I just ask the council's indulgence if I, if you feel I'm pushing you ahead at times. With that, as the mayor indicated, we'd like to go back to the comment section and to see if there's any public comment on this issue in particular before we proceed with the rest of the program. And I will take away my screen sharing at this time, just to make it easier for people to see each other and participate.
Great, thank you so much, Mister Larson. So would any member of the public like to provide comment on item four point one? If so, please feel free to raise the blue hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. I don't see anyone's hand raised. Ms. Fonderlin didn't, is anyone online? No? Okay, alright.
I do not see Mayor Kamay, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate the verbal acknowledgement as well. I could see your head, honey. Alright, so seeing no public comment, we'll turn it back over to you, Mister Larson. Sorry, I will close public comment and bring it back to you, Mister Larson, thank you.
Thank you, I just want to confirm, after we're going in and out of the screen, my screen is visible now to the council?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Moving ahead then. So just some ground rules. Obviously, I think you'll see later on that the city council appreciates and understands much of this already stylistically, including your past performance, but obviously, listening to understand, seeking consensus, assuming good intent during the course of the discussions, to always let me know if you feel we're getting off track, and that we all try to stay focused, given the strict timeline we're under. This, these are commonly accepted ground rules, and it's the basis on which we like to do our work with city councils. And it all comes from a basis of respect, which we'll be talking about later as well. We do have one other item. We've often called it a parking lot in years past. We have updated it to a bike rack, and it's a simple time management tool that I'll be using during the course of the day, and Christina Gilmore on your staff will be assisting in recording items that come up and may require more time to discuss than we have this morning. And so at various points in time, I may identify this appears to be an issue that requires more in-depth discussion, that should be separately scheduled for a council meeting, a study session, or for staff work offline before it comes back to council, and we'll put it on the bike rack at that point in time. So that concludes the workshop overview. What I'd like to do now is share with the council some interview results as we go into celebrating recent accomplishments of the city. And the way you'll see presented in all of the slides where I'm presenting interview results is I present those items that were raised by most of the council at the top of the list, and the items that were only raised by two council members at the bottom of the list, so it's a rough scaling of how often it came up. That is not a scaling of importance. It's really top of mind thoughts that came from council during the interviews, and it could be somebody thought of something that the others didn't, but they all would think it's more important. That's why we bring these notes back to the council for discussion, because this is really your public opportunity to chart your, your future as a team. So let's jump into the accomplishments now that you know the framing of how all interview results will be presented. First and foremost, the council was unanimous in recognizing the city's excellent response to the COVID crisis. It was mentioned by every council member, and some of the specific attributes that came in being mentioned by most council members was the tenant support and eviction moratorium that was provided, as well as landlord support as part of that, and the homelessness response, particularly the safe apartment program. It was just very much highlighted by the council. The council also recognized small businesses' support and the testing and vaccination center that was established in North County with Mountain View's leadership. There was also recognition from council members that food distribution through your community service agency and other services, as well as communications both with the public and the council were real victories as this pandemic has hit our world in Silicon Valley as well as part of that. But the city didn't just respond to COVID, which was an overwhelming response that was time-consuming for council and in particular your staff, and scary and time-consuming for your residents and businesses. But there was much else done by the city that the council recognized. In particular, two affordable housing projects moving ahead, the engagement of a new city manager a week before the pandemic started, I believe. And just that was a victory. It's one of your key roles is to oversee your council appointees, as we'll discuss later. There was also sustainability initiatives that one of your public speakers mentioned, the reach codes and the clean energy initiative. Two new parks opened, and to be able to have accomplishments like that during the course of a pandemic is significant. There's a longstanding school impact issue that's been resolved, and there was also mention of the comprehensive motor plan and how it targeted streets for particular uses and needs throughout the community. So I'm just going to pause here and applaud the city and the council and the staff for getting, in the community, for getting so much done, even in the face of the COVID crisis. Many cities basically put their goals and strategies on hold to get through the crisis. You were able to respond to the crisis and get a lot of other significant policy and physical work done in the city. But now I'd like to turn it over to the council and really ask you to just kind of summarize some of your thoughts on what made all of these accomplishments possible, and that really leads to the question of what makes cities successful. So almost like a lightning round, I'm going to turn off my screen in a moment and ask each council member and then the manager and attorney to just share one or two quick thoughts on what they thought made these achievements possible in the last year. And, not a mayor, but it's okay, I'd like to start with you as the mayor.
Thanks for putting me on this thought, Mister Larson. Always good to do before nine A M. No, I think as, as you list all those items, obviously, we, we, we as a community, as a city, can't do anything without our incredible city staff. And so, you know, all of those accomplishments are collective, there are accomplishments. I think, you know, in tandem, it's, it's our residents and our community that's really compassionate and caring and, you know, holds us to being as, you know, making sure that we can do all those, those things, so. I think those are my initial thoughts.
And it's my benefit to get to put people on the spot, so I'll go to the vice mayor now, but I, I will call on each of you first at some point. So it won't always be in this, this order. Mister Vice Mayor, would you like to add an item to the list?
Sure, but I don't have a whole lot to add, because I think the mayor summarized it very well. I also, most of our city staff, who, as, as good as our direction may be, it's not going to happen unless we have the right people executing it. And I think that they've just done a remarkable job over the past year especially. But I also think that, you know, we do have a very compassionate community that has stepped up in a really big way. And the mayor has the together M B background there, and, you know, a, a lot of the, you know, the support that was provided to, you know, tenants and, and small businesses came from, you know, philanthropic contributions from, from members of, of the community. And I just don't think we would have been as successful if we didn't have that kind of support.
Thank you. Now I'd like to go to the immediate past mayor, Abby Koga.
Thank you. Well, having had the honor of being mayor during COVID, I think I would, of course, definitely what's been said about staff and the community, but I think it was that we were able to be flexible and move quickly, which, and I really think our new city man, well, not, not, not as new anymore, but having a city manager who had just come in, but was just very open to that, understanding the urgency and willing to, you know, to actually make government go faster. And that attitude, I think, was permeated throughout our organization. So I would attribute it to that, as well as the partnership between council and the, and the, you know, staff and the community, as well as like our regional, like the county and other regional entities.
I'd like to now go to council member Hicks, who would then be followed by council member Manachak.
Well, I don't know that I have a lot to add, because I think that, that it's been summarized well already. I would, I would say, you know, primarily, it's our, our residents who support us in, in doing this kind of work. You know, I won't name any cities around us, but many cities around us, you know, can't go forward on some of these things because they don't have resident or voter support. And then again, staff, city manager, and so, to some degree, also what we're going to be talking about today. You know, we have to have a council that works well as a team in order to be able to accomplish these things. We can't be fighting all the time. So I think the previous mayor and vice mayor and, and previous mayor summarized it well.
Council member Manachak, followed by two returning council members.
Thanks. So I would echo some of the comments that have been made. I think that we have an outstanding city staff led by our city manager. And I do appreciate the flexibility that we have shown to be able to move much more quickly than we normally do, I guess I'd say. But I also really greatly appreciate staff not just responding to council, but staff proactively coming up with things that we should be doing them, doing, and bringing them to council. I would say that's probably a large chunk of the things that happened, and I greatly appreciate that. I, I'm very thankful to be part of this city with such an outstanding organization. And I think we also had a very collaborative council that worked very well together, and I'm hoping that goes forward. And then, as been mentioned, we have very engaged residents who also bring us ideas, and it's great to hear their perspectives. Thank you.
Council member Lever?
I would just add to everything that's been said, the great partnership that we have with the Community Services Agency. And I know that all the, the council members who are here during the past year really helped to strengthen and leverage that partnership to deliver the benefit to, to the community. And, you know, city staff have put in, just, I won't say tireless, because I think they're very exhausted, but have, have put in an above and beyond effort.
Well, coming last, coming last, there's, there's three things I'm, I'm going to say. One, I think that the city had an excellent financial foundation to be able to reach out and help people, and that was really an advantage that we had that, you know, built on past councils. And then in addition to that, particularly for affordable housing and for the reach codes that were mentioned, we have grassroots organizations in our community who are very supportive of that, and I think that made a big difference. But really, you know, I, I, I just don't think we can say enough about the value of having proactive and well-educated and hard-working staff.
Mayor and attorney, or manager and attorney, I don't know if you're just going to say thank you, if you have other comments you'd like to add. Kimber?
Yeah, thank you, Mister Larson. I would just say I'm very touched. It's been a long week, and so I, I just feel very grateful to hear all of your comments. I know that staff does as well. It's been a long year, and I would just say we have an amazing council. And if it wasn't for you all working in partnership with staff and having the sort of great relationship that we all have, none of this would have been possible. So I'm very, very grateful for you all, for prior council too. I, I just feel like we are very lucky to be able to work together, serve our community. We have an amazing community too, so I'm, I'm just very happy about everything we've done together. And thank you for all of your very supportive comments. It, it goes a long way with me, I know, and our, the rest of our city staff. So thank you so much.
Mister Attorney?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. I, I'd like to echo much of what Kimber just mentioned and also thank the council. What struck me most over this period was how immediate and focused the council's reaction and response was to the COVID crisis. But also, and I'm speaking also as a resident myself of Mountain View, how there was, it was never lost, the focus on getting the day-to-day work done of the city. And that's so important, and it is so impressive to me that, that once the immediate COVID crisis was addressed, there was an awareness that we have a lot of work to do as a city, you know, for our residents, and, and that impressed me so much. And I appreciate the council's support in, in our efforts to be flexible on a staff level to address these new legal and other concerns that arose. And I also want to say I'm, I was very impressed. I joined the city in, in two thousand and nineteen, and Kimber joined right when, when the crisis hit. And there was an immediate collaborative sense of teamwork and focus that arose with the city clerk as well at that time. And also, I want to mention the, the valuable contributions of the city's department head team and staff that all of them really rose to the occasion and, and really made me rise also. So I, I just appreciate that so much and, and everything people said about city staff as well. But mostly, the inspiration comes from the leadership of the council, so thank you.
Thank you for taking some time to go through that. I think it's an important discussion and recognition, and I'm not surprised by what I've seen of the council's performance of watching council meetings and the assessment you did in, in your past work, that the council had deep humility in really recognizing others. However, it's the teamwork the council shows that gets things done as a team for the community, and that the accomplishments themselves build relationships. And I wanted to share this slide briefly now, because just for the public as much as anyone, and that what I've seen in the city of Mountain View is that you have a strong ethic of teamwork, and, and you just all spoke to that, and then your staff responded in terms of appreciation of the and and you just all spoke to that. And then your staff responded in terms of appreciation of the council's leadership and working together during tough times. And I just wanted to confirm the slide is sharing? There it is. Uh, so that um we're not here in a curative state. We're here to try to get to the next level, and that's really the nature of the work that we want to do together for the rest of this morning is how do we make the team of Mountain View even stronger so that the accomplishments and victories continue for the years ahead? So going to the fourth item on the agenda was the communication style assessment work that we've just completed over the last week. And so the public is aware, the council individually, as well as the city manager and city attorney, completed a brief survey instrument that's based on research by others that our firm uses a lot with a number of our clients. That really looks at the communication styles of the elected and appointed leadership of the jurisdiction. And basically, the research has shown that there's four different dominant styles of communication, and none are better or worse than the other. And in fact, when you look at the styles, they each have strengths, such as direct being very decisive and maintains eye contact and action-oriented. But each style also has some challenges, which could make it challenging for people in the other quadrants to have clear concise communications with somebody in the direct box. And that exists for all four of the styles. They each have strengths and challenges that can be managed. And I do want to highlight, while the research has shown people generally have a preferred style, that's their comfort zone, we all work in all four styles as situationally appropriate. And particularly elected officials, we found, given so much of their work is about communications with the public, with each other, with regional agencies, we just see communications as a particular gift of elected officials in general. And it's why many of our uh clients have found this to be a helpful tool just to put what is one of their core responsibilities of communication into a context. So as I mentioned, we asked each council member, the city manager, the attorney, to fill out a simple survey that gets to the key elements of each individual's preferred communication style, knowing that they can work in the other boxes as well. And so what I'm gonna share first is what came back as the primary communication style. I've included the council members at the top with your staff underneath. And what's I liked about when I saw this is it's fairly well-balanced. You have uh people, members who are primary speakers in each of the four boxes. And while this suggests that maybe spirited is your strongest box, a slightly different outcome comes when you include the secondary styles. And I'll draw your attention to the lower left box. Every single participant in this communication style assessment identified considerate as either their primary or secondary preferred communication style. In all the years of my using this tool, I've never had that outcome before, where every participant had primary or secondary in a single box. So what that really leads us to is a recognition that for this council as a whole, the considerate style is number one by far, in that this council listens, supports, speaks loudly, and even as every council member didn't take credit for the accomplishments of the past year, they gave credit to others, be it the community, the staff, the group working together, being responsive, the CSA. Um, that is all indicative of very much of this considerate uh speaking style. And then coming in number two is the spirited, uh, you know, which I think has some nice offsetting balances to the considerate in that um considerate, you look look at one of the challenges, it avoids conflicts, keeps opinions to self, but when you look at spirited, it's persuasive and expresses opinions. Um, so you have a a natural balance there across the diagonal of these communication style, which I think can make you a a stronger council. However, there are some challenges that come from both of these uh primary and secondary styles for the council as a whole. And the keeping opinions to self or avoiding conflict, as well as poor time management and generalizing, can make it more challenging to move to decisions quickly and efficiently. And as we talk later about the length of council meetings, I think we might see some of this at play in that discourse. And then you have the other two who are essentially tied uh amongst the council for direct and systematic. I will share going back once that it is not uncommon for the manager to be in the direct as a primary and for the attorney to be in the systematic for their primary. And I wasn't sure how it would turn out here, but this is more often than not how it turns out for those participants uh in the assessment process. What I'd like to do now, just because we have a touch of time, is ask the council, you know, we I don't need responses from anybody, but anything new or eye-opening or surprising or that doesn't match what you expected from this exercise? And again, I'd like to keep this as a lightning round to preserve time for the later harder work we have to do. So any quick responses to the communication style exercise, if you have one? Don't feel compelled to respond, so I'll look for hands going up rather than calling on people for this item. Anything surprising? Councilmember Abi Koga?
Um, so it's just that like my one and two are very close, and it's interesting to see that they're actually, some of them are kind of like the direct opposites of each other. So I'd like to think that means I'm in the happy medium.
How about, does it feel right for the council as a whole? Is this how you'd assess the body, with the considerate being number one and spirited number two? Councilmember Sherwaltre?
Yeah, I would say yes. One of the things, um, uh, having, you know, worked in government a lot and worked with different city councils, I think we've we've always had a tradition, I mean, literally going back decades, of being considerate and um uh and civil to each other. And and I and I I really think that's very important. So I'm I'm not surprised to see that, but it's good.
Great. I don't see any other hands going up, and there's no action required on this. It's mostly for your information and because I think it informs a lot of the work we're going to be doing later on. Um, I will use this as an opportunity because a couple people did just do thumbs up that they thought it made sense. And since we won't be taking any decisive actions today in terms of, we'll be providing direction to your staff at various points during the morning, um, and as a time management tool, I may at various points do what we call cheap consensus, which is thumbs up means you love it, thumbs sideways means you can live with it, it's fine, it's okay. Thumbs down is we need to spend a little more time talking about the issue. And it's just a way to get to cheap consensus, so I can gauge where the council is in terms of closing out that item or moving ahead. And since this is a simple one, I'd like to use it. Is the council okay moving ahead from the communication style assessment, or is there a merit to discuss? You see all thumbs up? Good. Thank you. Let me go back to sharing the screen for the next item. So now we're gonna get to item five on the discussion outline, which is discussion of city council roles and relationships. And this is another one I'll share with you that uh with all the cities I've worked with that have far more challenging um council dynamics than Mountain View does, uh based on my assessment, um, we have to spend a lot of time on roles and relationships. But I'll share with you that from the interview, um, there's a lot of consensus among this council, and you well-recognize the roles of the council as a body, as individuals, and the mayor in particular. And so the public listening knows, one of the questions I asked each council member in the interviews in advance is what did they think of the primary roles of the council as a body, individual council members, and the mayor? And here are those results, again, in roughly descending order by each category. But it uh is a reflection of the seasoning of this council, that even your two newest council members have prior terms on the council, so they're not really new to governance um in a public role. And this is a very seasoned council that these interviews results showed. As a full council member, you all recognize you have a key role as a body, as policymakers. Um, second for community engagement and communicating with the public and being accountable and accessible to them. Because of the turnover in your direct uh direct council appointees since two thousand nineteen, this council had high recognition of the higher direction and oversight of those appointees being important. One thing I often don't hear is the recognition of the quasi-judicial role the council plays on land use issues that are appealed up here, and I really appreciated that this council recognized that. And the work you'll be doing later this morning and afternoon on setting city priorities and vision and financial oversight, obviously being a a key key role. And there was no divergence from the council. This was all in alignment of of what the council thought was the full council's role. Similarly, as individual council members, you recognize you have a direct responsibility to be accessible and accountable to your public. Coming out of the stylistics discussion that we just had, as well as the longstanding norms of the civility, and individual recognition of being civil and collegial to each other, being part of that team is is your responsibility individually, to recognize that you only have one vote. That it's a seven-headed Hydra in some cities, but not here. I need to come up with a better uh metaphor than Hydra for a city that's performing well like Mountain View, that it's respecting the majority. Um, but with that, maintaining your independence, I often don't hear this as much in other cities. I think um there's just was several council members who really said, you know, we have to be there as individually elected officials with our own thoughts and experiences. And a couple members even mentioned how it's the diverse range of experience that makes the council stronger, and having that present in the meetings is important. And then also the regional representation role you play was mentioned by a couple. And I do want to highlight the being prepared. Um, that comes up in almost every city. As a clear recognition, the council agenda packets are voluminous. Um, public comment is rising dramatically over the last five years. And there's just so much more to read and study and consider, that it takes a lot of work being a council member, and you acknowledge that collectively. And last for the mayor, um obviously cheers the council meetings. Uh, that was the number one mentioned by everybody, but also the rec- rec- recognition of the spokesperson representative role, um, and the ceremonial functions that come with being mayor for that year. Um, a couple council members mentioned, and I verified with staff, that the mayor and vice mayor together, working with staff and the department heads, city manager and city attorney, citizen clerk, set the council agenda. And then also that the mayor in Mountain View has a separate role of making the council appointments to committees and regional bodies. I will share with you, in other cities, this often becomes a discussion slide because there isn't consensus amongst the council on what the roles are and how the people perform. My read from the interviews with this council is there's wide-ranging acceptance um of this. So I again, I'm gonna look for the exception rather than around the screen commenting. Is there anybody surprised by these results or feel there's something missing that needs to be added? And we'll really just look for exceptions in terms of raised hands. I don't see any raised hands, so this is a relief to me because this is hard work to do when the council's not in alignment here. And I knew we only had two hours, so it's been good. Uh, a couple items that we're able to move quickly on to keep us on track for the morning. So what we're now getting to is, and I will share with you, we're about twenty minutes ahead of schedule, um, which is where we needed to be to get to the uh ten-thirty stop time. So that's that's good. Now we're to item six. Now we get to the meat of the work um for this morning in terms of, you clearly have a strong, well-functioning council that has a history of working well together. Um, how do we make it even better? That's kind of the challenge that's gonna be coming before us. And while most of the discussion in the next slide is are easy ones, we're then gonna get to harder ones about where can the council make itself even better? Um, and that's kind of the the task we have for the rest of the morning. So first, what's working well? Again, this is a reflection back to you of what the council told me. So these are not my thoughts from watching a couple of your council meetings. It's what you all thought. And I will say it was hard for a lot of council members because whenever there's new council members joining, it's a new council in total because all the relationships and roles change. And and you have two new council members who've come back from prior service. So it's hard to evaluate the current council. When I interviewed you, you had really only had one meeting. So you didn't have a lot of data to evaluate how this council's going to work together. So you had to draw on past experience and past projections, but it creates the framework of the discussion we're going to have today. First, what's working well? What was already mentioned upfront uh by a couple of council members. This city's long tradition of civility civility and collegiality. And I heard, I think it was Councilmember Sherwaltre speak, it was, I was wondering if she'd looked ahead in my slides somehow. But uh it was, this is a long tradition for the city, and you recognize your ability to work out differences and seek compromise. Getting to consensus can take time and is challenging and takes an ability to be considerate and flexible, which you've all highlighted as strengths. But I'm gonna emphasize the time issue. I I will tell you, some cities where it's a clear five-two or one-four vote, they sometimes just move to voting quickly without seeking consensus. And yet, as a former staff and to both councils as well as individual elected officials, I will just share, to the extent you have council or consensus among the elected leadership, particularly on the big issues, the time-intensive issues, the vision, the mission, the goals and strategies for the city, it lets the organization move that much faster. And so to the extent you complimented your staff in being quick and responsive, I think that really comes from a lot of the consensus that's occurred previously at the council level. But it just lets your staff be that much more fast and nimble in responding to the issues you and the community care about. I wanted to highlight this third bullet. Uh, this is where Mountain View is a bit different in your opening comments about what made the accomplishments possible, where all of you acknowledged staff's role and work in that. You all brought up here, uh respectful and appreciative of staff. There's just a high appreciation of staff and a recognition of the council staff role. Several of you also mentioned concern about burnout. And I will tell you in some of my staff discussions, that is an issue, especially in Mountain View, but in many cities right now, when you have the day-to-day job, compounded by having to do it remotely or digitally, and then respond to the longest-lasting crisis any city has had in modern times. Most, a fire, an earthquake, you know, it's kind of done with, you know, in a week or two. This is gonna take a year and a half at best before it's done with. And so I do think the council members who raise the concern about burnout, it's it's a very valid concern. And it's rare. I'm happy this council's taking time to improve their teamwork because it will make teamwork, because it will make it easier for staff to avoid burnout, to the extent the council is clear and together in their direction. And some other strengths were mentioned. You know, this gets really human characteristics, recognition that it's a smart and thoughtful council, policy focused, and also engaged with the community and caring. So it's not a hard-cold rationality, but it's a rationality and thoughtfulness that's balanced by engagement and caring, which is a real good strength. And that's what came from you in your interviews with me, about what you thought this council's doing well. And I think all of this lays a foundation for what could be improved, which is where we're going to spend the rest of, most of our time this morning. I've taken all of your feedback, and I was able to bucket it into three areas of possible improvement that I'd like us to work through this morning. And the goal here will be to get some council consensus on what you think is possible as this new council to embrace and focus on for the next year, as you build your working relationships to get through the pandemic and aggressive policy agenda ahead. So those three areas of possible improvement, almost every council member raised meeting length, meeting exhaustion, workload as an issue. As you'll see later, you all had differing solutions to it, but it was widely recognized that when you have meetings that go till two thirty in the morning, you're doing a disservice to the issue, because you're dealing with it so late, you're doing a disservice to yourselves, and you're doing a disservice to the community that may want to participate or be involved in that issue. And it came up in many different ways from each of you, why the meeting length and management is, is a big area for possible improvement. A second one is just respect. Goes back to the ground rules from today, I think it goes back to the city's tradition of civility and collegiality. How do you take that respect and extend it to all parties in the governance process? To each other, to the public, and to yourselves even, to be respectful to yourself. Then the last area, a number of kind of process improvements came up that council members wanted to have considered and discussed. So I'm now going to walk through each of these three areas, and because of my concern about time, I was going to ask you to hold your comments till we've gone through all three, but I think we now have time, Mayor, where we can take a little pause after each of the slides and have the council digest and provide some direction on each of those. So let's jump into the first one. Meeting length and management. As I said, there were three big issues that came up from the council for areas of improvement. These first two issues had three buckets to them as well, so it's almost a three-by-three matrix here. The first one is for council members. Lots of feedback from council members that we have to stay at the policy level, and a big part of keeping the meetings efficient and effective is to not dive down into staff roles, not to deal with information or details that can be handled offline or followed up in an email or phone call, and just getting data that can be addressed in advance, to really stay up, what are the core policy issues between the council that differentiate where you are and to stay at the top? This was mentioned by, by a majority of council as something that has to be done. Most council members also mentioned being succinct and avoiding repetition, that if something's been raised by another council member, rather than doing a paragraph on the whole issue that's already been discussed, you can simply say, I agree with that, and move on. And it's your role as public officials to let your public know where you are, as well as your council members, that being succinct and avoiding repetition. And then a couple of council members also recognized that during meetings that are particularly anticipated to go late or long, that council members should use their report out times for the broadest and most important issues that affect all of the council or staff or the community, not individualized items for that council member. So those are the three items that came up that you all told me you wished you or your colleagues would do more of as individual council members. You also had specific recommendations for the mayor's role. And I don't think it was so much for pointing that mayor Kamay, because she had chaired one meeting at this point in time, but it's just to manage the meeting length, the mayor has to play an aggressive role managing the meetings. That's what, in this case, she has been appointed to do. And part of that is managing the public comment, to make sure you're doing your role of garnering public comment and providing that opportunity for the public to speak, but to make sure it's being done in the most efficient, effective way possible, so the public and the council aren't staying till two in the morning to have their opportunity to speak and to recognize there's a balancing act to do there. Some discussion by setting both item and speaker expectations, and this came from different council members, but as we get to an agenda item, saying, you know, here's how much time I think we have for this, if we want to target being done by midnight. And just setting that expectation. I modeled that at the start of this, where I set our goal is to be done by eleven, or ten thirty, not eleven thirty, which is a bad word, by ten thirty, so that we all know we're working on a clock to getting there, and to do that periodic time check back with you, so you know where we are. But then it's also for individual speakers, be it staff presenters, outside presenters, applicant presenters, appellant presenters, and even public speakers. And then a role that some councils like the mayor to play, others don't, and maybe a discussion point here, is really for the mayor to have their antenna up looking for when, in this case, she sees an evolving consensus or at least clear majority, to then move to action and to be the one to pull the trigger that it appears like we're moving to consensus or a majority on this issue, can we move to action and to empowering your mayor to take that role, rather than letting it go on longer than necessary? So that's what came up for the mayor. And then for city staff, as has been raised in prior council workshops, your staff noted need notes from two prior council team building workshops, and this came up in those as well, particularly the first one, is to limit presentations and question responses. It came up for most of the council as one way to reduce meeting length and to improve its management. And it's the presentations upfront, I'll share from my experience and best practice working with a lot of cities, the staff presentation is often really just to frame the issue for the public, to make it clear what staff's recommendation is and why, and then also to provide any new information that wasn't in the staff report. And that's kind of, if the staff presentation is limited to those three roles, it can shrink them from being twenty minutes to seven minutes, and if that's the purpose of a staff report. Question responses are the same, and this came up in a couple of different ways through the interviews, just keeping them short and high level, and also to use the question responses as a chance, it's getting into details or issues that aren't really the policy issue before the council, to shorten the response. And if somebody asks, you know, about a sidewalk grinding criteria for the city, and you're talking about a street repaving budget, laying out the thirty-seven sidewalks that are going to be paved in the next year, and which approaches are being used for each one, is probably going to a level of detail not needed, but just to say there is a prioritization process, and that was not an example given by a council member, I'm using it from another city I worked with as an example. So let's say, you know, we can clearly send back to council what our policies and priorities and how we target which streets are served, and this is really the budget appropriation to do that work, and that's the focus. So those, this was a big one mentioned by council, which is why I'm spending more time on it. Also, some use of visual tools as much as possible, and to step back from the discourse, and here's where I'm not role modeling, but a couple of council members said, and that's reading the slides to the council, but I'm also trying to focus and give some color behind them, so I'm sharing back to you what you shared with me. And then it wasn't a big issue, it doesn't seem to be a real problem in Mountain View, but it was mentioned a couple of times, so I included it on the slide, which is, staff's role is to present the recommendation, and that's kind of the handoff to the council, and let the council then do their job, which is deciding whether to go with the recommendation or to take a different path, which is the council's job. And, and I know your manager shared with me that she clearly tries to avoid staff ever being viewed as an eighth council member, because that's not their role, and I think that's shared by council as well. So anyway, Mayor, I'm going to stop here and just look for some council feedback on the slide, things they're comfortable pursuing, and maybe here I might call on, on the past, the past mayors first. So can I see the council members who've served as mayor previously? Sherwaltre, I thought it was most of you. Okay, let's go with Councilmember Madatchek, since you're highest up on my screen. Could you comment on the mailbox? Is that all achievable, do you think, for this city, to increase the mayor's authority in those areas?
Absolutely. I do feel like those are my expectations of the mayor. I'm not sure I mentioned all those when we spoke, but I agree with some right here. I think it's very doable.
Councilmembers?
Yeah, I really agree with Councilmember Madatchek, and I would say too that the mayor is really responsible within the meetings for receiving the public in a respectful way. And so I've obviously just had one meeting, but I was really particularly pleased how our mayor is doing that, and really setting that tone, I think, is critical.
Councilmember Avikogu, you're the most one, recent one who's been in the mayor's chair for last year. What was hardest about for you as mayor to implement this, that might be advisory to mayor commit?
I would say some of this has been evolving. Managing the public comment item has been, it's changing, as you mentioned, that it's, you know, the numbers have been increasing. You know, we've been grappling with how do we balance that with the time that each member gets, and then trying to, you know, share, share those reasons and the expectations. And maybe I think we have to maybe try to do more of that, because I'm not sure that, you know, it's all making sense as to why we have to maybe shorten the time on each speaker if we have more of them. So I think the managing the public comment piece is probably the most challenging at this time. But the other items, I think, I think all of them are doable. I think, yeah, some of them are a work in progress, so.
Councilmember Sherwaltre, and then I'll be going to the mayor and vice mayor.
Yeah, I know, in two thousand fifteen sixteen, when we were going through the rent control effort, we had just, you know, there were several meetings where we had a couple of hours of public comment, and, you know, there would be like eighty or ninety speakers, and so managing that was, you know, I mean, that, that, that really, in situations like that, that just kind of takes over the meeting. And I don't think there's much we can do about it. That just tells us that it's a very, very important issue to our community. But what I wanted to mention was guiding the council to action. I think one of the things that's kind of different, a mayor, in a sense, runs the meeting and is the closest thing to a facilitator we have, but it's not quite a facilitator. But one of the jobs of a facilitator is to say, oh, I hear consensus, when you hear people saying the same thing, and to kind of summarize what that consensus is. And I think that sometimes that can be used as a tool to shorten the discussion. And I don't think we've used that very much recently, and I'm wondering if that would be something we would be, you know, will, the mayor would be willing to do from time to time, is just to say, oh, I think everybody's saying this, and then we can, we can vote and move on.
And it's why I went through the order of presenters, the four past mayors first, because I believe both the mayor and vice mayor, it's your first time in these roles, and I guess the question now comes to you, based on the experience of the past mayors, but I'd all like you to play this role this year for the mayor and next year for the vice mayor presumably. Are you comfortable with that? Are you willing to be that manager of the council? And I think one member talked about how, well, the mayor is kind of the captain of the team, and so I think this really reflects that, being the captain of the team. So Mayor, I'm going to go to you next. Is there any challenge with this, or parts of it you'd like more clarity from your colleagues on?
Well, I don't think any clarity is necessary. I mean, I think the, you know, the most challenging thing that I saw last year, and I think will continue into twenty twenty-one, is being on the virtual platform and having meetings and doing everything in the mayor box in a virtual setting. So I think to, you know, just systematically, like that, that is a little bit different, you know, some, the technology aspect for some of the public who's engaging, you know, I think sometimes takes a couple of minutes for them to unmute, or, you know, so I think that, you know, everything can be done in this box, and I think myself, and I don't want to speak too much for the vice mayor, I think, you know, we had one meeting, or, you know, I think we'll try to achieve these goals, I think, you know. But I think part of it is just the, you know, also understanding that we all, we all have varying levels of fluency in both language and also in the technology components, and that, you know, it's not regular, you know, city council meetings, it's, you know, in the virtual space, and how are we, I think, able to do all of this? You know, you have to look for hands, both sometimes people are physically raising their hands, they're raising it in the Zoom box, you know, I think that those things add, you know, some other layers. And so, you know, I think that we also, you know, yes, the mayor and the vice mayor can take on these, but I think there also needs to be, you know, an element of, of understanding of all the moving pieces, and that each meeting can be different. Our technology, I'm sure when you watched our meeting the other week, was challenging.
The technology makes it really hard, and I was doing a council retreat like this for a council in the Bay Area on March seventeenth, which you may remember was the first day of the stay-at-home orders statewide. So that morning, we had to go from what was going to be a live in-person retreat to a Zoom retreat, and nobody had used Zoom before, so it was a, was a challenge. At least now we have a year's experience all of this in the public. And Vice Mayor, one of the roles of Vice Mayor is to advise and support the mayor being successful. Are you willing to play that role to help the mayor be strong in each of these areas?
I, I don't know if I would give, I don't know if that would be my definition of sort of the responsibility of vice mayor, you know. But like, I feel like, you know, to the extent I can be supportive and helpful, I am happy to be, you know, I'm, you know, we're all part of the same team, but, you know, I'm decidedly sort of number two, right? So if the mayor interested in, you know, involving the vice mayor, which personally I think Mayor Kamay has done a very good job of doing, I appreciate it, I like the opportunity, but one of the things, I'll speak from a place of ignorance, because I've never served as mayor, but I think we also, we also should afford each mayor the latitude to serve, you know, using a style that they're comfortable with. You know, some of us, you know, like I, I don't know how I would share meetings, but, you know, I feel intuitively that I'm going to be kind of like a, you know, a, you know, iron fist in an iron glove kind of guy, just because I, I'm, I feel like sometimes the meetings can go wrong, because there are a lot of public speakers, but other folks may not feel comfortable. the meetings can go wrong because there are a lot of public speakers, but other folks may not feel comfortable running the meeting that way. And, and I think it's important for each mayor to serve using a style that is really authentic to them.
And Councilmember Hicks, any thoughts about this? Do you think the mayor playing this role would be helpful to accelerating the council meeting?
So I, I generally agree with what's being said. I, the line item that I'm focusing on the most is the set item and speaker expectations. I'm hoping, although I generally agree with what's being said, I'm hoping that we don't abbreviate the discussion among council members so much that we're not really discussing the policy that we're trying to make. I feel like we've largely gone down to meetings every other week, whereas a couple of years ago, we were having them sometimes twice a week. We have more speakers and we have longer presentations. And I feel like by the time we get to policymaking, it's often late at night. And I, I really don't want to short circuit that too much. And the place that I'm, I'm going to throw something out here that's, I don't know where in this agenda it goes, but I was talking with the school board members, and they said that the superintendent has a kind of a separate update. I think he's been doing it since the advent of COVID. And I'm wondering whether that's something we might do. We have an excellent presentation at the beginning of each of our meetings by the city manager. But I'm wondering if that could be managed separately in some ways. And so that the superintendent holds his on a separate evening, which I don't think, I'm not imagining us doing, but I'm wondering if we could have a set time, whether it's 20 minutes or 30 minutes when, so that, because I've seen members of the public come in when they want to speak on something else and kind of drop off as, at our last meeting, the presentations went on for a very, very long time. So.
Thank you, Councilmember Hicks.
Wondering if there's a tool we could use to abbreviate the present, the speaker's presentations a little.
And I think when we get to process improvements, that's where that fits. That's a great idea. That didn't come up through the interview. So I've added that to discuss under process improvements when we get there in two slides. So that's a great idea. Thank you. So Mayor, what I'm hearing is the council is generally comfortable with you being assertive in these roles, which gives you direction as a new mayor to, to play that role within your own style and approach to governance, to manage the public comment, to set item and speaker expectations, and to guide the council to action as soon as you sense the council's ready for action. And the set item and speaker expectations, I apologize if that was unclear. I blended a couple of different thoughts I got from council together there, and it's for both staff and outside speaker expectations, making sure they know publicly, not just staff telling them, you'll have 10 minutes to state your appeal or five minutes or whatever is determined. It's important for that to be said publicly as well. So there's a public accountability to the time limit, not just a private accountability to the time limit is what we've seen in cities. And then some cities do try to set a time expectation for items, and it may be something the mayor, vice mayor and staff do when they review the agenda, saying, gee, this item 20 minutes, this item 30, this item 50. And, and know where that takes you to a, two o'clock or a 12 o'clock endpoint. And staff knows this. I actually did that for this session. I had each item mapped out for time, not that those are strict, but it lets me know if we're running ahead or behind, so I can inform you where we need to be. And it's just a pretty simple tool to manage time of public meetings, knowing there's variables beyond your control in terms of public comment and council discourse that's needed to get to a decision. And those are unknowns. You do your best guess. Let's move to council members, and I'll just be asking, again, it's a little bit of a time management. This is what your colleagues have asked of each of you? Are you comfortable with that? Are you each comfortable, and these are three tools you can individually apply to make council meetings more efficient and effective? I see a lot of head nodding. I'm going to ask for thumbs up or thumbs sideways or thumbs down, so I can get a sense if there's items we need to talk about. Okay, I'm seeing all thumbs up or thumbs sideways. So Mayor?
I see some people with raised hands, Greg. So I wasn't sure.
Oh, you do, okay.
I do, yeah. So I, I'm sorry. I was, I was trying, yes, I was trying to find a way to alert you. And then I just wanted to.
Got it. I now see them.
Perfect. And I wanted to give some feedback on like the, the timing of the agenda. You know, in my experience last year and into this year, there's definitely time allocations and our best guesses. And I just want to publicly say, as you were saying, you know, we do try to do those things. So do you see the hands?
And, yes, I do. Vice Mayor Ramirez?
Thank you. So I, I want to, the slides are all a little messed up. There we go. So I, high level, I'm, I'm generally comfortable with this. I think the one point I want to respond to, because I, I do feel it's more of an art than a science, is stay at the policy level. I think most of the time it's, it's unambiguous, but sometimes we are presented with questions where it feels like, you know, we're being asked to micromanage or weigh in, you know, on operations more than perhaps we're equipped to. And the, the example that stands out is when we were talking about expanding the safe parking program, yeah, I think both Evelyn and Shoreline. And, you know, there were questions about what types of, you know, how should we utilize the additional spaces? Should they be for, you know, was it auxiliary vehicles or people, you know, sleeping in them? And I don't feel like I need, I don't, I don't think I'm equipped to make that decision. I feel like that's something that we can safely let, you know, the program operator figure out based on the input they're receiving from the folks being served. And so, you know, I don't, I don't think it's easy to, to provide unambiguous direction on what is policy level and what is operations. You know, clearly, we might have differing opinions about this, but, you know, to the greatest extent possible, I think if, if staff can help us stay in the policy level by, you know, teeing up questions that are clearly at the policy level, and, you know, providing, you know, the staff or program operators, you know, the latitude that they need to succeed, I feel that that would help the council as well.
And let's see, Councilmember Maticek and then Shaw Walter.
Thank you. So I just want to comment on the third bullet there. I believe I brought this up during our discussion. And a couple of years ago, we decided that it's typically during item eight, the only things we would bring up are our attendance at regional board meetings, and if there was any information from that regional board meeting that the rest of the council members should know. And I believe there's a policy that says that we do have to report out on items where city funds have been expended. And I think this has made a huge difference in the amount of time we spend on item eight. And so I would like to continue with that practice if we could going forward. Thank you.
And maybe we can put on the bike rack Christina to share with council that prior policy direction. Other councilmember Shaw Walter?
Yeah, I was going to follow up on what Lisa said. I, I kind of agree with you, Lisa, except that I think that sometimes we go to meetings that we want to share the information with our fellow council members. But by the time item eight comes around, we're all exhausted and everybody wants to go home. So it's, it's a horrible time to do it. So I'd be interested in just another process for sharing that information.
If there's council concurrence to that, we could look at, looking at, you know, taking what the prior direction was that Councilmember Maticek raised. And I can look to see if other cities have set up an offline process for doing that, but still public. Because there's a public sharing piece to that as well, to see if there's further refinements of the past direction from council that might be warranted to look at in the future. And there's no action or direction needed from council on that. I see one last hand being raised, Councilmember Hicks.
Well, I was just going to support Councilmember Shaw Walter's recommendation. Maybe you were putting that in your notes anyway. Thanks.
Yep, yep. Okay. Then for city staff, this has come up before, limiting presentations as well as question responses, because sometimes the question response is, if something's getting into out of policy and into detail, the question response can take it even further into detail, instead of elevating it back to the policy level. And by doing that, it makes it a shorter response as well. That's an art for staff. It's not a science as well. I believe most of these are probably acceptable to the council based on the feedback I received. I do want to move the agenda ahead, so I'll just look for hands raised. If council members have concerns or comments they want to make about any of the city staff items, otherwise we'll view it as collective direction to staff. They're right to assist in the meeting management. I don't see any hands raised. So whoops, but I did jump off the slide. So let's move on. I think we have general consensus this, and what I have on the bike rack regarding the reporting out on broad issues in particular. Respect for all. Again, this is three buckets, as I mentioned. I'm going to go through all three buckets more quickly than I did before, because I think they're all fairly self-evident and they play the strengths of this council and this city. So hopefully they'll be doable. For the public, you know, listen, avoid responding in ways that could be perceived negatively by the public and treat all speakers the same. I do want to highlight that's challenging. I understand from several people, Mountain View may get more than its share of speakers from outside of the city who choose Mountain View as a place to speak, but the viewing public and the participating public may not know that. And it, it can come across differential to, to various participants. For each other, probably the only concern I've heard raised from many council members, it came in two different ways of, you know, everybody wanting to keep the civility and collegiality of past years, but kind of a lingering or an undercurrent of concern about growing factions and divisiveness that we're certainly seeing nationally and statewide. And I'll tell you, we're seeing it in many, many cities. And it would be great if Mountain View can avoid becoming one of those cities that gets very politically divisive and factionalized, because it will hurt your productivity as a council. It just slows everything down. And an item will take four meetings instead of two, and staff won't be clear of the direction of where they're supposed to go. And it just, it slows everything down. And I'll share this, it was raised by a majority of council, an undercurrent of concern about these first two items. And then a couple of council members brought up, as has been brought up in prior retreats, just the legal obligation of each council member to personally commit to adhering to closed session confidentiality. That it is a violation of the law to share anything out of closed session that the council is not permitted to be shared outside of closed session. And the attorney can certainly weigh in with a separate training on that for council. But I've worked with too many clients who've faced problems from violation of that. But I, I just wanted to highlight what a couple of council members raised. And then that was unique here, was being respectful for yourself and your own experience and opinions. And that a couple of council members mentioned, it wasn't a majority, but a couple of council members said, you know, we all come in with our own thoughts and experience, and that's a strength. But we need to be able to say what those are and to share them. And to be direct in, you know, as the council is trying to find a path forward on a decision that's hard with, with shifting going on. It's easier if people kind of have taken the feedback and their experience and education to express where they're going. And then the last one's a bit of a standalone, and I'll, I'll turn here because she said it already during this workshop. The mayor is just asking for patience from her colleagues for yourselves and each other, as there's technology challenges and changing public dynamics, that you all have to be patient with each other and with the system and process. So, that kind of summarizes what you all told me, that I put in this bucket of respect for all. It's all individual behavior. It's not really council action needed. Are there any points on the screen that council members find either unclear or problematic that they're uncomfortable with? I'll look for hands raised on the screen or with the icon. And Councilmember Shaw Walter, you will be getting these slides, so.
I see.
So I don't, no, I see one hand up. Councilmember Lever, yes. Thank you, Mayor.
In terms of the public and having a kind of meeting where people from the public who are at the top of our org chart are wanting to feel effective. I, I think one of the issues is when people come into the meeting or a very complex issue that the city's been dealing with for quite a while, it's hard to get into the information stream. And so if there was some way at some point, I don't know what that pathway would be, to say, if you're looking to get into the stream of discussion on housing or on the sustainability initiatives, here's a rundown of the, the past information. And I don't know if that would just be, you know, pointing people to the items that are on the website, but sort of, I, I think if people don't feel like they have a, an on-ramp, then it can deteriorate for them quickly.
And if I could paraphrase back, I heard two places, one, new council members coming into an issue that's been longstanding, as well as members of the public trying to get engaged in an issue and understanding the history of it as they want to add their voice to the public discourse. It sounds like both are relevant issues.
I'm specifically calling out the ability of the public to, to get into the, the discussion. And I think I kind of felt that just on our last, on our last item that we discussed, and I don't know how many members of the public are watching this, but I would expect that some people wouldn't be clued in on what's item eight and things like that. So I think that offering that on-ramp or making things really clear is helpful to quelling frustration.
That sounds like an item for the bike rack for maybe the manager and I to discuss approaches that have been used by other jurisdictions. Sounds like it's a staff level engagement. Okay. And I see no other hands up for this item. Can I take that as general council consensus that you're individually willing to pursue these in your behavior in council to strengthen the team? And we'll just go to chief consensus again. Okay, Vice Mayor, you're good? Okay, great. Thumbs up all the way around. Good. We have one last item for this section of the program. And then we're going to get to norms. And this is possible process improvement, and we have one added one from Councilmember Hicks. I will say, the only ones that were mentioned by a majority of council in the interviews, and I already have shared this with your manager. and I already have shared this with your manager, was strengthening the goal-setting process. And there was not concern about the goal-setting meeting when it's happened. It was more concern about living to the goal-setting for the next year and not letting 10 other goals come on top of the 10 adopted goals that maybe push out some of the 10 goals. You know, and, and to create some reliability and facility to the process that will go a long ways to helping your staff with the workload issues we talked about earlier. Um, and I'll just, I'm gonna separately share with your manager, kind of when we've done priority setting with cities. We share best practices for living to your priorities. And I, I'd just like to share that with your manager to see what's appropriate for, uh, Mountain View. And then it can be, uh, weaved into your next goal-setting process. Coming out of that though is the second issue that a majority of council raised is we're just trying to do too much. We as you, the city, you were telling me you're trying to do too much. Um, and that's why the agendas are so weighty and full. And it almost goes back to the mayor, vice mayor, staff, agenda-setting, load balancing and workload balancing for the council to make sure you're being your most productive and collegial and collaborative selves and not having to get to more friction-filled types of decision-making structures. Um, so those were two that were brought up by a majority of council. Others were raised, uh, just, you know, being more aggressive, using the consent calendar. I will share one idea that I hadn't seen before that may be worthy of exploration is that sometimes you don't want things on the consent calendar because they get buried and it's a good news story. Oh, yeah. Approval of a construction contract for a new library could be a consent calendar item because there's probably no discourse about it, there's no appeal. However, that's a moment to celebrate that you're achieving something great. So the idea was, could there be items of note? So, you know, you have the consent calendar, you have items of note, which is really consent calendar. But we want people to know this is big stuff. And then you have the weighty agenda I had to look at. Um, a, a practice that a couple of council members said that I've clearly seen today is raising hands and being called on, not, uh, jumping in. And that also then lets the mayor make sure everybody's spoken once before somebody speaks a second time. That's just a, a great, uh, practice of civility and collegiality. One item that came up from a couple of council members was when asking questions of staff, making sure it's a fact-based question, not a, not a commentary question. And to separate the, the fact base from the discourse and, and to keep that clear. And then it's always an issue for most councils to get questions to staff in advance by email or phone. Um, I heard differing feedback from council on this that I'll share with your manager on best ways to do that. Um, but I will tell you, it also goes to the shorter meetings. To the extent your staff is not blindsided at council meetings, they can be more professional and clear in their responses to give you the information you need to make the decisions you wanna make. Um, and that's, that's critically important. So these are possible process improvements. I think unless the council's concerned about any of them, it really becomes direction to your staff to work with the mayor and vice mayor on pursuing some of these for possible implementation over the next six months, um, with, with the council. So I'm looking for hands raised. I see one from Councilmember Lever.
Um, so I think if we can put further definition into the, um, limiting substantive council agenda items, I, I like the phrasing of rebalancing. Um, but I'm concerned about shifting the policy role to staff. And then I think the, the consent calendar, I've noticed the, the growth of the consent calendar. And I think it sort of becomes a thing where people are pulling items from the consent calendar because they really shouldn't have been on consent in the first place. And, um, maybe one thing that might help with, um, the agenda is, um, to really have more of a timed, uh, agenda or tentative times. Um, and to the, you know, greatest extent that that can be semi-accurate. I know it really depends on how many people, how much public input there is. Um, but if we have an ex, uh, expectation of, of time, and maybe that's already going on, um, in the background and I haven't noticed, uh, the agenda, the couple of agendas that I've participated in. But I think having an expectation like that would help.
Great. I'll go to the other council members who have followed up. I think Councilmember Hicks is next and then Maticek.
Yes, and Greg, tell me if I'm, if I'm raising this in the right time slot. Um, so maybe this is where I can say something about, uh, the way I've seen presentations abbreviated. And, um, uh, I was, I've gotten feedback from members of the public that some of them, um, really like and appreciate the COVID updates and wanna, you know, want to observe those and, and participate in them. And others come to our meetings for a particular agenda item that they're, that they're very interested in. Um, and so that made me wonder if we could more strictly do, and, and then the, the agenda items get pushed off as our presentations are, are long. That made me wonder if we could divide those into two separate, more, maybe more closely timed items. Just to give an example, uh, let's say our council meeting were starting at 5:30. If it could start with a, and I don't know, the, the city manager can say how long they generally are, but, uh, a COVID update from whatever it is, five to 5:15, five to 5:30, that's kind of scheduled. And then the full council meeting starts after that, say at six. Um, and then council members, I have to say, when I turn off my moving video, I'm in the room and I'm listening. But it would mean that we could be fully present and fully engaged for the items that we're, uh, making policy over. So, and that's in some ways the way, it's a little different than what the school board is doing because they have a full second day for that kind of COVID and reopening and so forth discussion. But yeah, I'm trying to figure out how we could, uh, make the, the presentations work more for everybody in some way.
Thank you. And let's see, I believe I said it was Councilmember Maticek next, followed by Shawalter.
Thank you. Um, I just wanna make a couple of comments here. On the last bullet, um, I like that we have the ability to send in questions. Um, I know I have a hard time reading all the questions and responses before the council meeting and because they come in, um, later than they used to in the past. And so I'm wondering if we can look at an improvement where maybe the deadline for council members to send in the questions is earlier, which would give staff more time. Um, and we could maybe get them back earlier than we currently get them. Um, I do, um, agree with the comment about the consent calendar. They're growing. And I, I do think often items are pulled because we do wanna comment on them. And so maybe they don't belong on the consent calendar. So I like the idea about the items of note. Um, kind of categorization. Thanks.
And let's see, um, we have Councilmember Shawalter next.
Yeah, hi. Um, I'd like to say ditto to Lisa's comments particularly about the items of notes. I think that, no, I think that's a really good idea. And I also wanted to mention that at the Water District, um, on the agendas, um, they had time certain marked for just a few items. Usually it would be like, you know, maybe not even one, an, uh, an agenda. But when there was something that we knew there were gonna be a lot of people talking on, we would say, okay, this is gonna start at a, at a existing, at a specific time. And then they would basically stop whatever else was happening to get to that time certain. So people in the public could, um, uh, you know, could take part and could know when they could, you know, would, would be able to take our part. And, um, uh, I think that a judicious use of that might, you know, might be valuable from time to time.
Good. Um, let's see, we're going to go to, uh, Councilmember Maticek, is your hand up again? Or is that, okay, we're gonna go to Vice Mayor Ramirez and then I'd like to call in the city manager for a couple reflections. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Um, so I, uh, I, I hear what, what everyone's saying. And I think there are some interesting ideas that we can pilot. Um, the, the time certain thing I think is challenging. One of the things that fundamentally, I think we have to hold ourselves accountable for the length of a discussion, right? And, and, you know, there are some things we can do, maybe with public comment management. There might be some things we can do with reducing, uh, you know, the presentations from staff. But I think, you know, really it's, it's incumbent upon us to do the best that we can to, you know, either come to consensus and vote on the matter or agree that we don't have, you know, consensus and it might be a four to three split, but we vote and we move on. Um, the, the challenges I have with something like interrupting an item is you, you lose the momentum that you have from a discussion. It comes back and it doesn't, it's just like, we, we, San Jose does this with some degree of regularity. And I, I don't think it actually leads to better decision-making. And then I think more importantly, I, 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 I wanna be respectful of the staff who are participating for a particular item, right? And you might interrupt something that, you know, is not as controversial but could take some time to deliberate, you know, for an item that might take three hours. And then you have the staff who are waiting for the conclusion of the first item, sitting around. Uh, and, and it just, it doesn't, I, I think, I would rather start with what can we do as individual council members to be as, uh, you know, productive in our comments and, and, you know, exercise restraint um, before we, you know, and put in place some pretty significant structural changes that I think could end up being counterproductive and dis, disrupting the flow of, of, of our discussion. Um, the other thing, um, Greg, I, we, we, you know, I, you might have this somewhere else. And so I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna be, keep this jumped. But I do have some pretty strong feelings about, I think Councilmember Lever had mentioned this. Uh, staff sort of, uh, anticipating where a council might be on a policy issue. Um, you know, if the council has made a decision, uh, that's totally get it. You know, you, you are exercising the will of the council. But there are occasions where I think, uh, you know, staffs will, you know, engage a stakeholder group or an applicant and, you know, anticipate where a council might be in a policy question without actually asking the council. And I think that leads to some challenges. So I, you know, we had talked about that. I don't know if that's somewhere else in the agenda. I can talk about it here if that's helpful or sit on it for later.
Um, before going to the manager, um, thank you for both of those, uh, feedback, Councilmember Ramirez. I don't have the issue about staff meeting on an issue prior to council action because it wasn't raised by enough council members and it, it didn't kind of fit the buckets. So I think that is an item we need to put on the bike rack for substantive discussion with staff. And I will follow up with your comments on that. In terms of the time certain, um, I, I've been in systems that use it and don't use it. And there's strengths and weaknesses, like there are to so much. And, uh, what I think works best is not to make it a public request, but to make it a manager, mayor or vice mayor, vice mayor, manage decision in that agenda setting when it might really be useful to have it, but not to make it common. But, uh, Kim, what about Ms. McCarthy?
Thank you, Greg. Um, so just some thoughts, real quick, high-level thoughts on some of the process improvements. So, um, I spoke with the department head team last week and we talked about, uh, presentations and the length and how things were going. And we just, um, really discussed how we will be really focused on that seven-minute mark, seven minutes or less. Um, there may be some times, especially if it's a very, um, I guess, difficult or, um, a more complex policy issue where the presentation may go a couple of minutes longer than, than seven minutes just to make sure that we are explaining it as well. But we are definitely going to, um, really be focused on shorter, concise, uh, really to the point using visuals and presentations. So, so that is something certainly that we will, um, be working on. And you'll see that starting on Tuesday. Um, in terms of study sessions, I, I think you all probably have realized over these last several months that we've tried to also limit the number of questions to council because I know that was, um, something that was talked about before and really trying to keep it at, um, the high-level policy questions that council needs to answer and not give you all, you know, multiple questions, but really trying to keep it at like three or less questions um, related to your policy decisions. Um, I would note that for the time certain, I think the challenge we're gonna have is we just don't know about the length of public comment or, or how many folks are gonna show up. So that's something I think that we might have to modulate during the meeting itself. Obviously, as we see how many folks are in public comment and, and want to talk. But we do actually in agenda review discuss how long, um, an item might take just at least in terms of the, the presentation and, um, how long we might think council, you know, questions and comments and public comment might, might be. And, um, you know, with just this new environment this past year, it's been harder to predict, I think, than being in person when you know how long an item might go. Um, I, I think the last meeting we had was more of an anomaly just because of the presentations and how the flow went, um, with, uh, the discussion about fencing. And then we also had a lot of technical problems that we hadn't had before. So I think, I, I wouldn't want to use what happened last Tuesday as kind of the benchmark um, because it, it really, that, that was an anomaly. It wa, it was strange that just a lot of things. It was like things happened during that meeting that, um, tech, technologically that we hadn't experienced before. So, um, I think that we can definitely make things more crisp. We'll, we'll continue to talk about the, um, timing of items in agenda review. And I'll continue to discuss that with the department heads and with the mayor and vice mayor. And, um, really just try and drill down, drill down to this more efficient, you know, process and getting you all through your items and giving you the ability to talk about your policy decisions. Um, so I think all that is, is good and it's possible and we'll work on it. I would say though that for consent, um, I'm hearing kind of two things. So I'm hearing both that we want to use the consent calendar more. Um, and, you know, we really are trying to do that for administrative or operational items. But I'm also hearing that some council members may wanna pull things off consent. Um, so we'll really try and focus the consent items for those routine operational administrative items. Um, so that's what we are focused on now. And obviously, um, you know, a council member may want to pull something to comment on it or questions. But we'll, we'll still focus consent, um, the way that we have been trying to.
So I have to step into my time management role as well here and move the council on so you get a little break before strategic planning and are able to get re-energized before that. So I was planning to go through all of that and then.
Sorry, Mr. Larson, a council member. Yes, a new hand went up. And I, you know, I think we can, we can have a little bit of flexibility and if we have to, I, I don't want to, um, stop the conversation if colleagues wanna continue on this item, if that's okay with you. Okay.
Of course, you're the boss. Councilmember Obi Cogan.
Thank you. Um, I guess I, as I was listening to everyone, um, my feeling on these items is that, um, to be there a little contradictory to, um, you know, we don't want long meetings, but we don't wanna add things to consent calendar. Um, I just don't think, you know, as I, just from my experience, it's possible to do all this, frankly. And I think it's not, I, I agree, I think it was Vice Mayor who said it. A lot of it has to do with our own, um, right, our own constraint. Um, I think we can try to tweak the process here and there, but it really comes down to one, you know, and I think it's connected. If we wanna be at the policy level, then we should be able to let things go and go on consent more often. Like if you look at. Like, if you look at the consent calendar, it's usually, you know, contracts, um, that we're proving, um, you know, if we're designing something, if it's, it's come to us three times, I don't think we need to, like, make it a another action item, it's, you know, we've talked about it several times. Um, I guess I've always felt that if you wanna comment on something on consent, you know, you don't have to pull the item, and we've done this, we've been doing this, where we can just talk to it, and that, to me, I think does speed it up, rather than making it a separate, you know, action items, or new business or old business, however you wanna, um, put it. So, um, I think we just, yeah, I, I just wanna be realistic, and I don't know if we are being realistic, to be honest, um, by looking at this list and listening to the comments. I will say, like, um, you know, the time certain, um, you know, we do, we, when we go through agenda setting, we try to approximate how much time each item's gonna take. Um, you know, honestly, this last year, we missed the mark, we had no idea how many people were gonna show up to the meeting, so it's just not, um, you know, we do our best, I think we've done this for a while, but it's been just a lot more unpredictable, the issues we have are just a lot meatier, and, um, yeah, I think, you know, so it's really gonna be incumbent on us as to how much we're willing to let go. My thoughts, thanks.
And I actually think, uh, the council member and the manager's comments kind of feed exactly to where I thought this discussion would end up, which is you basically empowered the mayor to be a stronger captain manager of the meetings on your behalf, that's kind of point one. Second, I think all of you have collectively realized you have individual responsibility here to participate in the public discourse and making the meetings efficient and effective, and you've heard from your colleagues what they would like, um, that to be represented as. And third, you have a number of items to explore or maybe even try, and that's working with your staff primarily on the process improvement, and I think those probably primarily go to the mayor-manager meeting, their vetting in terms of the agenda setting process. And I think that's about as far as you can go on this discussion, is empowering your mayor, each of you taking your considerate style, and trying to be responsive to your council colleagues for what they're asking for. And third, being willing to try some new approaches this next year, as long as we're in pandemic and stuck with the Zoom format, to see if there's some ways to help the council discourse occur before midnight or 1:00 AM, um, and when it can be at peak performance for each of you. And with that, Mayor, I think that's about as far as we can take it, because there isn't one more item that the council has an opportunity to embed some of this discussion if they wish. And that was, uh, item seven on the agenda, to assess the city council norms. And, uh, the norms, if the public doesn't know, it's actually a one-page document that's called How We Work Together, that was first drafted, I believe, in 2015, and it's been reevaluated by the council a couple times, and it, uh, comes under these, uh, nine, or ten categories of discussion, and there's more detail in the one pager on each of these, but this gives you the flavor of it. And I just wanted to share back to the council, um, two things. One, in your interviews, you all said, "It's good we have them," but most of you also said, "I don't know how much we're using them or following them," so it was kind of the, the flip side. So I really wanted to turn this discussion into some best practices we've seen in other cities, and we think that really comes into three buckets. And the first one you already have, that's why the checkmark's there, they exist, they have life, and they have longevity, they've been around for over five years, they're probably part of this tradition of stability and collegiality that exists in that review that you've all commented on. So, good points there, that's probably priority number one. Priority number two is, with a couple of exceptions, they've generally been reviewed annually, often, I think, at this team building workshop, so I would count this as the annual review, where you got them in advance, they've been publicly disseminated, they're being talked about in public, and it just raises their awareness. So, I'd give you a checkmark for generally doing that first piece of the commitment bucket, but there's another opportunity that not many cities do, but my sense is, given your history of having norms, it may be relevant as well for you, and that's to just do your commitment as an individual. Leading and doing this council retreat or coming out of it, you each get it, and it, you just sign, I've review, I've read and reviewed the norms to refresh my understanding of them, and it just goes to the clerk, and it's, you're all, you know, ethical political actors and actresses, and that's a statement of, you, you're committing, you're recommitting to it not only as a collective, but individually. And that's a practice that has worked in the city I managed and some other cities. Then the third bucket is where I feel there may be some opportunities as well, you know, just make them visible, the public will hold you accountable to them, as well, and that's, and you'll hold yourself more accountable to them if they're visible, have it as a big chart in the council chambers, if there's room for it, print it in the council agenda packet, either as the last page or the third page after all the legal stuff, just make them visible, and, and your public will help you remember them. Um, the other one is, the last one is a little bit more challenging, some cities do it, uh, few cities do it, but as you're a relatively strong council, I wanted to throw it out, if there are a council member or staff person, or even a member of the public feels somebody's not living up to the norms, what's the recourse? First recourse is obviously to do that direct discussion. Some cities have looked at the mayor, vice mayor, having, uh, a safe place to go to, say, to raise a concern, and then it's them in that role, raising it to the council member that, you know, we heard this concern, we just wanted you to know about it, and it creates that. Um, so that's kind of my sense of your norms. What I wanted to tee up here for discussion is, are there any possible changes, and also to get a thumbs up on recommitting to the document today of How We Work Together? Um, and the direction on possible changes could be any of those items I listed as possible additions to your process at the bottom of the prior slide. So, maybe first, Mayor, in the interest of time, if I could go to the second question, would you just see if the council's willing to recommit collectively to How We Work Together as a, a statement of, of how the council wants to be? And I see most council members, Councilmember Lieber, or you come, yeah, okay, I saw everybody recommit to those, but now let's talk about changes to work on over the next six months before we reconvene or reconvene in a year. Um, are there changes to the How We Work Together you'd like, either process or substance? Now, can I go back to this slide, just because it helps? Uh, T one hand up, Councilmember Matichak.
Thank you, um, I think your last point on this slide is an interesting one, and I think it might be worth considering, um, having either the mayor or the vice mayor play a role in helping us to live up to this commitment and to address any issues that might come up. I, I'd like to consider that one. Thank you.
Any other council member comments? I see Councilmember Lieber, and then Shaw Walthor.
Thank you, um, I, I think that one thing that can come up, um, frequently, um, when you're serving on a council or in another role in government, is, um, a defensive posture, and a lot of times the, there's a lot of incoming, um, feedback from the community or from interest groups, and, um, it can be hard to not just, um, react with a defensive posture, but every action has an equal and opposite reaction, and I think sometimes the, um, the defensive postures really fuel, um, more reaction, and, and so it's important to, um, try to receive people well, um, uh, even if they're from a different city, or, or they're coming forward with, um, maybe not the full information, or, um, a lot of different scenarios like that, I, I think that resisting the defensiveness is, is really important to being productive.
Next one is Councilmember Shaw Walthor, followed by Albae Koga.
I was just gonna put in a plug for posting them in the council chambers when we get back there, I think that's a great idea, and, um, then the other thing is, I, I don't know if this is, um, there's a link to this document on the website, on the sort of city council page, but we might wanna think about adding that, too.
Councilmember Albae Koga.
Uh, thank you, I, I agree, I, I think posting it would be great. Um, I appreciate Councilmember Matichak's comment about, um, a role for mayor and vice mayor, and I was actually thinking, um, in, in the context of, um, you know, what do we do when, um, maybe someone isn't following the norms? I mean, we've had a few, a, you know, very few, but a few cases, and when it's annually, sometime, you know, a whole year seems like a long time, um, to go, so is there a way to, like, address an issue that might come up? Um, and it could be for the mayor or vice mayor, or, I know last year before COVID hit, we had talked about doing a check-in midway, and we just never got to that, um, but maybe that's something that we could, you know, think about, and, and I know the city managers suggested it, that we do a half, you know, a ha, a six-month check-in. Thanks.
So in the interest of time, Mayor, I'd like to just reflect back what I'm hearing from the council, is some interest in more process improvements, and not so much changes to the language, and I think what I could do is work with, uh, your manager to bring back something to the mayor and vice mayor as part of the agenda review, and then it will be a, a city decision, whether that's something that goes to council for action, or is simply just at the staff implementation level, um, and then it gives you time to evaluate that as an approach before you revisit the, uh, norms mixture, um, and decide if further changes are needed then. Um, I did think Councilmember Lieber's comment about defensiveness, I did try to reflect back in the individual commitment for council members to treat the public with respect, um, and it's hard, um, as the divisiveness of the public discourse has risen at every level of government, it's hard to be the passive listener, but that is part of our role as public officials. Um, with that, I don't see any further hands up, I think it's primarily direction to me and your staff to follow up on some process improvements, given, again, we've already achieved the biggest part of you have norms, and you review them almost annually, and you're recommitting to that, and we'll set up a process to look at that lower level of improvements. And I'm very intrigued if several council members suggested a role for the mayor or vice mayor, I think that does create a safety valve for the council to, to know that we're always living to these standards, so. With that, we have one last item we wanted to discuss, and it's, uh, if I can get the slides work, um, is the, uh, expectations for city council email management. Basically, the system had changed over the last couple of years, and I really wanted just reflect back what I heard from council, and then your staff will have a chance to present some comments, and then I think it's, it's probably in staff's hands at that point if council is in concurrence. Um, in terms of what the council told me, um, you know, high expectations, where a majority of the council felt, each council member chooses how to manage their email, that's part of the job of being, uh, a council member. Um, we're all getting too much email now, so we all deal with that in both personal and professional and civic roles. Um, plus the demand that several council members shared that the public expects emails to get to council the moment they hit send, they expect council members to have read it, uh, and that's not reality, but it is the public's expectation, given instantaneous communications, but again, just wide recognition from council about wanting to avoid burdening staff and making this a bureaucratic process that is, is involving a dozen staff people, and, and maybe that's not necessary. So that was the real clear feedback from council in my interviews, but there were mixed opinions on whether the prior system or the current system was better, and not everybody had experience with both, so it's not like I could do a survey, plus I wouldn't wanna do that sort of voting through an interview, anyway, that's not the purpose of them. Um, uh, there were concerns raised about just always making sure constituent matters are tracked and recorded, so there's less cycle of time following up on those. But also, uh, this was one council member in my own experience, just recognizing that agenda communications are part of the public record as well, so how does that get, uh, worked into the clerk's dynamic? So that was the feedback from council that I shared with your staff, and I wanted to, just in the interest of time, rather than ask for feedback on that, let's just take that as the feedback I got from council, to share with your staff, and go right to the staff response, which was, um, I'll just put all three up and turn it over to Ms. McCarthy.
Thank you, so, um, we hear you, and this is something that I think the staff, we've been trying to work through this over the last several months as well, um, as the volume of emails that have come in has, has been significant, especially those requiring staff follow-up. Um, so the current process has been in place for quite some time, and, um, what we're going to do that I think would be much more effective and efficient for both all, all of you, all of council and staff, is in the, um, email, you're going to get them directly now, so right now they're filtered through the clerk's office, and so we're, we're changing how, there's no delay, no different categories, whether it's policy FYI, operational, no filter. Now, what this will mean, though, is that there are some emails that come through to that city, uh, council email that, that are spam, that are, you know, vendor solicitations, that, that are things that aren't necessarily for council, um, so just know that you probably will be getting a lot more emails, uh, could be up to 50 a day, um, that's what I've been told, so, um, I see a couple council member spaces, um, so, so that is, that is the difference, um, but that way you will get them real time. Uh, then staff in the city manager's office can identify those emails, which do require a staff response, uh, and so staff will make sure that those emails get to the appropriate department head and staff to be able to follow up on those matters. The one thing that I did want to ask and, and seek some sort of consensus on is how you all would like to see those responses, because right now there's so many emails flying back and forth, where staff's also following up from the original response, sometimes a resident or a person will then respond back, and then there's the email that goes back, so there's a couple options. We can make sure that council will automatically receive, uh, the response from staff, so that you know the loop has been closed, or what we can do, and that's real time, so the email, again, comes to you immediately, or what we can do with all of staff responses, we can batch just the responses together, so you're getting all of those pretty much kind of at the same time, and whether they're weekly or bi-weekly, I think we could figure that out, but you wouldn't get those responses real time. So those are two options, and so I, I would like to know council's preference as to whether you would like those responses real time, or whether you would like the staff responses batched. And then lastly, I will say, we do have, excuse me, Ask MV, so a lot of the things that are coming directly to council are items that require follow-up from particularly often public works or community development, things that could be going through our system, basically, our case management system that aren't, so oftentimes staff will enter those into the system when they come into you and then still respond. So, uh, we are trying to get the word out and make sure that the community knows to keep using Ask MV, but obviously there are some things they want to send directly to council, so I did just wanna note that, that we do have that, that system that we use and has been in place for, for many, many years, um, but we will try and make this process more efficient. So the feedback is to that third bullet, that, that I'd, I'd love to hear your, all of your thoughts- just on this proposed process and then how you would like to know about staff closing the loop.
So, uh, we have Vice Mayor Ramirez has raised his hand. Is he on the line so far? Followed by council member Hicks.
Uh, I've, I've got a, a couple of quick questions for the city manager. I recall hearing that batching emails actually is more time-consuming for staff. And the staff burden is an important consideration for me. Uh, so is it, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm comfortable with whatever direction, you know, my colleagues provide. But is it easier for staff to do it real time or is it easier to batch them? And then, uh, regarding Ask MV, this is also something I've been very interested in. Um, I haven't sent an email to, you know, city.cork and who knows how long. But can we, can we sort of tee up an auto-response that says if you have, you know, a constituent concern, use Ask MV so we can sort of direct people to the correct location? Um, or is that something that we can, we can try introducing to see if it helps properly, you know, uh, I guess redirect, uh, constituent correspondence?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Ramirez. I, I think to your latter suggestion, that's, that's excellent. If, um, everyone is amenable to that, it's definitely a way to make sure that everyone knows about Ask, Ask MV and where to go to. Okay, I'm seeing a lot of thumbs up. We can definitely do that and I'll, I'll, I'll work with our, our interim city clerk on that. Um, so that's great. In terms of batching emails being more time-consuming, it, it really was also just trying to be considerate of your email inboxes. So if you're gonna start getting a lot more emails up to, you know, fifty a day, plus the emails that come from me or staff, just on, on general updates. Um, you know, I think we, we have the one person, um, the one staff person who's gonna help field all of the emails going out, so they should also get the responses. So I wouldn't necessarily say it's, it, it's gonna take time to, I guess, PDF them. Um, but it would give you all one email as opposed to maybe many emails, depending on how many emails it came through from, from council responses. So, um, maybe we can hear what your colleagues think and then go from there.
And we've got a few hands raised. Uh, first up is council member Hicks, followed by Maticek, Lieber. Oops, council member Hicks and one down. Oh, no.
Yes. No, no, I, I'll put it down because I'm ready to speak. Um, so just briefly, I don't mind at all getting the unbatched, the individual and immediate, um, emails from everyone, uh, whether it's, uh, the public or, um, or the staff responses. That, that's, uh, I may be the only one, but that's very easy for me to, uh, sort through and address. Um, I also find that if I choose to answer a, a particular member of the public, it's easier to do that if I get them that way. So that, so it even saves me time, it seems like. Maybe it saves everyone time. Um, the, the other thing that I, I don't fully understand, uh, is my lack of technical expertise. I get things in, uh, two buckets. One is labeled focused and one is labeled, um, I forget, unfocused. Um, it's labeled something else, but lower priority. And this may be what you're talking about, the vendors and so forth, and the million webinars I could go to. Um, that used to come in my unfocused and they're now coming in my focused. And that's the one that actually I preferred to have the, the unfocused one more full of vendors and so forth. Um, you know, I can go and read it if I want to, the webinars that I'm now invited to. But they do clutter up my, um, my focused box and make me maybe miss things. So that's the one that I would prefer, um, that I, I, I would prefer it the way it had been in the past. And that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Council member Maticek.
Thank you. So I strongly prefer them in the emails to be sent to us in real time. Um, and not only, um, do I then feel like I'm like up on the latest input, but it's easier to respond to. And the way I use my email system, I can file them in the appropriate categories when they're batched. I can't necessarily file them. And I, I feel like we've had lots of different processes since I've been on council. And, um, now we're batching them by topic, but in the past we didn't. They were just all batched together. So I, and it made it sit hard to respond when it's in a PDF, especially much previously, which, um, the email address was redacted. So then we had to contact staff to get the email address. So I'd say, send them to us real time. We can choose if we want to respond. It makes it easy, I think, to, um, manage the emails. And I prefer staff's responses individually as well, for that same reason. Not only am I looking to close the loop, but I, I like to educate myself on what's going on in the city by reading staff's responses. Thanks.
I'm hearing a lot of head nods, so pretty clear consensus, uh, Ms. Manager. And we do have a hand up from council member Lieber.
Uh, I, I was just gonna agree a thousand percent with everything that council member Hicks and Maticek said. Um, real time is king and there's absolutely nothing worse than batching and turning emails into PDFs. Um, so I think we've got it.
In the interest of time, Mayor, it's clear there's at least a council majority, if not consensus, on your recommendations with some additional suggestions, uh, Ms. McCarthy. So I think, is that sufficient clarity for you? Yep, it sounds like it. So we can move on. And, uh, thank you for the additional time, Mayor. We have used it, but we're now to the end. Um, we will prepare a workshop summary, just of some of what we've discussed, which will include the slides and the discussion today that you provided and where there was consensus or ideas brought forward. Um, I don't think we have time to do the final question, which is one takeaway from today's workshop from each of you, because I think you need a break before you start strategic planning. But as an alternative, I'll be providing to the city manager as soon as this call Zoom is over, a evaluation link that I'd asked you all to complete today. It's a couple of quick questions and it's just so myself and our firm can continue to improve in how we support city councils and the important work you do. So, um, with that, I'll turn it over to the city manager for any other comments. And I believe my portion of the workshop is done.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Uh, no, I don't really have any other comments. I'll turn it over to the mayor. Other than, thank you all. This has been very productive and very helpful, uh, for me as I, as I work with you and work on all of these, um, improvements. And so thank you very much to Mr. Larson. Really appreciate it. And I'll turn it over to the mayor.
Great. Thank you both. Uh, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Larson, for leading us through our first and hopefully final, um, virtual, um, council team building session. We really appreciate it. And I, and I'm assuming too, that along with your summary, uh, you will include the parking lot items that we were not able to get to. And I think that would be really helpful for perhaps the half, you know, the six-month check-in that some of my colleagues mentioned, um, earlier. So I think that that would be very helpful. All right. Thank you very much. And thank you, um, to staff and, and my colleagues for powering through. So, uh, we are a little bit behind, um, but I know that we all need a bit of a transition break before we get to item four point two. So, um, if possible, are, are, is eleven-ten gonna be possible for folks to go abide? And, okay, I'm seeing nodding heads. So, um, if possible, Ms. Van Der Linden, can we put something up to let folks know that we'll be resuming at eleven-ten?
We will certainly do our best, Mayor Kame. Yes. And we will pause the meeting for the break. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. See everyone at eleven-ten. Thank you.
Thank you kindly.
And we're all ready, Sullyah, feel free. Great, thank you so much. Okay, welcome back, everyone. We will be going into our second portion of the meeting. Today's strategic planning workshop is one of many planned events in a collaborative process that will engage the public, city council, and city staff in the creation of a vision and strategic plan to guide the city for the next three to five years. Sorry? Okay. Going into our second portion of the meeting. Okay, I'm gonna mute. Please visit the city's website at mountainview.gov backslash strategic roadmap for more information and frequent updates. The purpose of today's workshop is for the city council to discuss our vision, mission statement, and strategic priorities. We will not be proposing or discussing projects today. We will begin this workshop with a brief presentation by our facilitators from Civic Makers, after which I will invite public comment. At this time, I'd like to invite our consultants from Civic Makers, Laurence Godeska and Krista Blackford to introduce themselves and their firm, and to provide a brief overview for today.
Hello, thank you, Mary Kame. Appreciate the introduction and really honored to be here. Let me see if Kristel is with us yet. Kristel, are you there? Mary, I'll just make sure that she is with us. We were just in a little bit of a prep for this portion of the meeting with city manager and assistant city manager. So again, my name is Laurence Godeska. I am one of the co-founders and the CEO of Civic Makers. We are a strategic planning and management consulting firm based in San Francisco and really honored to be here and to be a part of this process today at the retreat. Really appreciated Mr. Larson's effective facilitation of a really important conversation about how the council can work together more effectively themselves and collaboratively. And excited to take that conversation into its next step of the idea of a new strategic roadmap that kind of expands from beyond just the council's work together, but also to really incorporate the input and collaboration of staff as well as the community. And we'll be talking about that and how that will work in the strategic planning roadmap process in a moment. I'll start by sharing my screen and we'll get into that presentation. And here we go. All right, and let me go into present mode. All right, can everyone see my presentation in full screen? Zoom success?
It's still loading. There we go.
All right. We'll take the small wins. Every little thing that goes right with our new technological context is good.
It's not quite full screen, Laurence, just FYI.
Oh, it's not, okay. Yeah, I think we'll have to make that work for right now. Okay, so our agenda for today is, again, the introductions and overview of the process and telling you all how we're going to proceed with this really, hopefully, deep and stakeholder-driven process to develop a strategic roadmap for the city of Mountain View. We'll have some public comment after that, and then we'll dive into the dialogue. And we have a lot to cover, just like Mr. Larson said, it's an aggressive timeline, so looking forward to you all helping us stay on track. As mentioned, we're Civic Makers and won't talk too much about us, other than to say that we have done this type of strategic planning and alignment work with a number of cities across the Bay Area. You'll be seeing an example briefly from the city of Hayward that went through the same process. So very excited to bring our approach to you, which is, again, very focused on gathering the right voices at the right time to make sure that everyone's in alignment and moving forward in the lockstep fashion. And also providing opportunities for discussion and improvement along the way. Why do we need a strategic roadmap? A strategic plan conveys a clear direction forward for the organization and really towards the end of facilitating more effective decision-making and promoting accountability at all levels. And of course, making sure that in that sense of accountability, what we say we're going to do, what we commit ourselves to in a strategic roadmap actually gets done, and we have an opportunity to hold ourselves accountable and look back and say, how did we do? It's a fundamental leadership and management tool for organizations. It enables leaders, both you elected officials, council members, and staff to establish an aligned vision and to set a goal that everyone will work toward. And it conveys council's direction to the public, so to instill a confidence in the future of the city. And we're very excited about some of the community engagement efforts that we have planned to inform this roadmap. It helps the council and staff match resources with established priorities, which we'll talk about a bit more in depth. It creates clear strategies to pursue and achieve goals, especially in this moment of just real struggle to, as Glenn said, address the public health and emergency response crisis of a generation. Being clear about the strategies we're pursuing and whether or not they're being effective, a roadmap really helps with that. It defines essential outcomes and performance expectations, and I think really importantly, and a real hope for us is that it helps employees see themselves in that part of creating the city's future. So with that, the goals that we've been talking to Kimbra and Audrey about as far as this process are alignment on a vision for the city of Mountain View, refining the city's mission statement and council major goals or strategic priorities, and getting staff and council agreement on prioritized projects that are feasible within staff resources that would move forward those major goals or priority areas. Making sure they're validating what we're putting forward with staff and community input, and also integrating with the two-year work plan and budget planning and approval process. So kind of establishing a planning cadence over the course of the next year, two years, and beyond. Want to touch briefly on what we've heard from staff so far in our discovery process. A couple of what we call glow points. Staff are incredibly devoted to ensuring they fulfill their commitments and making sure that they, not only offering quality services, but meeting their core operational obligations. And I know I heard that in this morning, and I'm really glad to see council recognitions of staff efforts. Staff really see Mountain View as a unique place with a unique identity, and particularly strong progressive values that they're proud of. And staff are already appreciative of this process and this opportunity to take a step back and talk about how staff and city council can work together to meet the needs of the community. And staff hear your appreciation for their work, and that's a great place to start this process off from. Some of the pain points, we heard this again this morning too, but just to reiterate, staff has been doing a great work at maintaining those service levels, but they're stretched really thin and working beyond their capacity. It's leading to some burnout issues that could potentially affect staff retention. The extensive special projects sometimes can compete with core service obligations, and so that's a perfect area for us to talk about in our planning process in the coming months. Staff has also managed, challenged to manage their current workload while responding to this crisis. That's no surprise to anybody. And because of that, staff's going to need some time to get back to the normal service levels after the crisis has been abated to the extent that we feel that return to normal is here, whatever that looks like. And then finally, staff really feels that they would love to be involved with finalizing these strategic projects to make sure that they're the right size, the right fit, and they're feasible given staff capacity and resources. So how will this process differ? I want to, Kimbra, I have a couple of thoughts here, and I wanted to make sure that, I think that we had taken a note that you would mention a couple of things here too. Is that still on your mind? Okay, great. So let me just share a couple of thoughts here. You know, this process is going to be a little bit different. You have your major goals process. It's a two-year process that aligns with the budget. This strategic roadmap process should not only include that priority setting and budget planning, but also go broader, go bigger to establish a longer-term vision. but also go broader, go bigger to establish a longer-term vision. And like I mentioned, a cadence so that you can return to that over time. So it's an umbrella over your goals, planning, and budget planning process. It also will go deeper and more finite into yearly objectives and really need to integrate with the core staff obligations that are there that might not fit into the strategic plan. Strategic roadmap is really meant to capture those areas that the organization feels it needs to focus on to move forward those visions. Maybe gaps or critical priorities that everyone's identified that we're not just quite there yet. Of course, there's this whole set of priorities and ongoing services that the city offers that won't be captured in our strategic plan. And for that, we oftentimes will use the iceberg analogy. Our strategic priority at the top, but of course, there's this huge body of work below. So negotiating how those two fit together is really important. And I'll turn it over to Kimbra at this point, because I know she had something to share.
Thank you so much, Lawrence. So mayor, council members. I'm glad that we're just kicking this process off now. I think this is going to be a great time for us to really set what we see as the vision for the city and really think about where we're headed and what is important to us, not only with council, but also with staff and the community. So I'm not sure that all of the processes maybe in prior years have involved this much level of check-in and community feedback. So we really thought that with the way things are now with COVID and opportunity for us to really think about what the workload is and what all of the projects are and the priorities, it would give us a great chance to really just do this now and start on this really important project and help pave the way for where we're headed for the future. I think the other piece is just the alignment and making sure that we're hearing feedback from everyone is also something that we heard a lot from council and from the community. So I'm really hoping that this is a process that will allow us to all come together and everyone's on the same page. And I'm really excited about starting this. And we do have, I would just note, we do have a webpage that has been created for the strategic roadmap that we can also share. And we will also have a lot of opportunities for check-in that I know we'll be detailing, not only for council, but for the public. So I will just stop there and say, I think that this process is going to be excellent for us to go through. And I will turn it back over to you, Lawrence. Thank you.
Thank you, Kimbra. And I'm going to introduce my colleague Kristal Blackford. She's one of the partners of Civic Makers and leads our community engagement effort. So she's going to talk through high-level overview of the process, the timeline, and share some of our community engagement approach. Thank you, Kristel.
All right. Thank you, Lawrence. Glad to be here, everyone. Excited for this process. So we'll dive into walking you through the timeline and process here. I'll have you advance the slides there, Lawrence. And this won't be a surprise to council. I think you've seen this before. This describes our high-level approach to strategic planning, and you'll see that this, what's maybe unique about this is that we really integrate internal and external stakeholder engagement throughout the entire process through continual touchpoints. From the discovery all the way through defining the mission and vision, defining priorities and projects, then validating the roadmap, and then getting into the implementation. How do we measure success through metrics and enablement, and finally, how do we roll it out and monitor success? The next slide describes our some definitions, and I also just, I think you've all seen some of this, but I want to just get back to it to make sure we're all on the same page for the rest of the day. So I think that also just to note that these might evolve a little bit. We might shift and use slightly different, unique terms to Mountain View, but at this point, these are the terms that we're using. So strategic roadmap is what our end goal is, the plan that we're putting together. And the vision is a clear, specific, compelling picture of what you want the city to look like in three to five years. The mission is, Lawrence, we can see your slack. I think you're on full, full computer display. The mission is the defining purpose of an organization at its most fundamental level. Priorities is what you have been referring to as major goals. They're closely aligned, but there's a little bit of a difference that we'll get into as we proceed today. But really, the top areas of focus that organize that vision. And then projects nest under the priorities, and those are the main activities that help us achieve each of those priorities. And then finally, year-one objectives are kind of like the specific sub outcomes for each of those projects, what we start with, and there'll be objectives for not only year one, but year one, two, three, et cetera. And then metrics is how we keep track of our progress. And we'll come back to these throughout the day. Here is an example for your reference. You saw this, council members saw this already, but you can, I just wanted to refresh that this is an example from Hayward, and this is a potential kind of end product that would be like the high-level organization of the strategic roadmap. And of course, there's a lot more detail that goes along with it. And the next slide shows that level of detail where we have, this is one of their, the city of Hayward's priorities. Preserve, protect, and produce housing. And you'll see here the list of projects is in bold, number one, two, three on the side. Underneath there, you have the year one and two, three objectives with specific lead departments and support departments listed there. And then the timeline is what's filled in with different colors to indicate the organizations that are, the parts of the organization that are leading that. But this sort of shows you a little bit of a high-level work plan that starts to roll up into that overall list of priorities and vision. Here, I'm going to go into our specific timeline for this project. And just want to note that there is a lot of deep staff involvement throughout this process. We focused this particular slide on the council and community touchpoints, but there's staff process pariling this all throughout. So we've already done our discovery kickoff and planning. And today, here we are at the top of February with our retreat. And we'll be doing council consent item to, on status of the current council major work goals and plan on the 23rd of this month. This month, we're also doing community focus groups and community meetings, which will spill into the first week of March. In March 16th, we'll be bringing council and staff together to review the draft vision, mission, and priorities. And this brings together what we're going to hear from all of you today and what we're going to hear from the community and what we're already hearing from staff. So looking at the data collected on vision and priorities and mission to date, that will be the focus of the March 16th discussion to really get to refining and developing a draft mission and priorities. So I want to just state that we're not going to get into any finalization today. This is for us to begin to understand the council's perspective, and then we're going to take that and the community and the staff perspective and integrate that. So we're not drafting anything or agreeing on anything today. Moving into April, the 27th, we have council providing direction on the prioritized project list. So once we have that draft vision, mission, and priorities, we'll start to work on our project list. That's those specific things that work towards each priority. And we should have a draft strategic roadmap with the project list by the end of April. Going into May, we'll be doing our second round of community engagement with a survey, community-wide survey to validate that draft strategic plan. And then we'll be revising our roadmap, and in June, going to plan adoption and rollout. So we're moving quickly here. We have a lot to do, but we've already done a lot. So I think we're doing, we're on track. And the next slide just goes into a little bit more detail about the community process. So this is a really high level of what we're going to be doing with community. Last month, we worked really closely with staff to develop an engagement and communications plan. We've just begun to roll out promotion with that webpage, which is linked here, or the URL is there at the bottom right of the page. We have a press release out and started some social media, and we're going to continue to promote through emails and newsletter. And this first phase of engagement, which you can see spanning February and March, is really going to be focused on input on the vision and priorities. And we're doing that through a series of small focus groups. That's that top box, Spanish Mandarin and Small Business Focus Groups. And we'll be doing a series of public meetings as well. And then, once we get to May, which, as I said on the last slide, by then we'll have a draft strategic roadmap. We'll be then sharing that draft with the community through a citywide survey and gathering feedback. And I just want to make a note to council that we would love feedback and comments on this because this, I know, has shifted a little bit since last time we spoke. But we want you to, if you have any thoughts, just jot them down, and we're going to actually return to a brief discussion of this at the end after we go through our vision and mission activities. I'll turn it back to Lawrence.
Thank you, Kristel. We are now going to pause for public comment on that introduction. And Mayor Kamai, or Kamai? I'll turn it back to you.
Great, thank you. So if I could ask for your help, and maybe this would be a good time to stop the screen sharing so that we can have the timer. Thank you so much. And so as today's focus is on the vision, mission, and strategic priorities for our community, I encourage comments that focus on these elements. The council will not recommend or discuss projects to accomplish strategic priorities until the March 16th Joint City Council Staff Workshop. This allows time for Civic Makers to engage with the public, for city council and staff in the visioning and strategic prioritization process, and for the city council to consider input from those engagements in our decisions about projects. This meeting, since we started at 11:10, we're going, this meeting is now scheduled to go till 1:40 PM. And we're going to have many items that we'll discuss in the workshop. So for, we have about 32 attendees that I see. Not sure about the call-in numbers on the line. So if a member of the public would like to provide public comment on item 4.2, please click the blue raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on the phone. I see four hands. So Ms. Fonder Linden, can we do, okay, the hands are now increasing. Can we, can we do two minutes, please? May or Kamai? Okay. Thank you very much. And, you know, if folks would like to introduce themselves before they give their public comment, we would encourage that too. I know that it's hard to do in this virtual space, but would appreciate that. So I will start with our first speaker. Let's see. So I am no longer the host. Can I ask for, thank you very much. Okay. And Ms. Fonder Linden, do we have the timer ready to go for two minutes? Wonderful. Okay, Janet Workman. Please feel free to unmute.
Thank you. My name is Janet Workman. I'm a Mountain View resident, and I'm just, I would like to offer some comments on behalf of Mountain View Housing Justice Coalition. First, I just want to say that we appreciate the city's commitment to equity and racial justice, and we commend the city on on all of the efforts it's made to foster inclusion in the community. The immediate challenge for the city, of course, is recovery from the pandemic, which has both exposed and exacerbated our longstanding inequities. And this challenge makes it more crucial than ever to address gentrification, which is a problem that is threatening the diversity of our community. Our region has extreme income inequality, and that is perpetuating and deepening the injustices, which are all rooted in historic patterns of discrimination. So at the same time that we, that we welcome newcomers to the city, we have to make intentional efforts to preserve not only racial and cultural diversity, but also economic diversity. We have to work much harder at keeping Mountain View home for people across the economic spectrum. For all workers, for retail, restaurant, and service workers, for daycare, healthcare workers, teachers, and public employees. And all of the city's goals related to inclusivity and environment.
Your time is up. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Shani Kleinhaus?
Good afternoon, Mayor Kamai and council members. This is Shani Kleinhaus from Santa Clara Valley Odebon Society. Mountain View is one of the only cities that considers nature and biodiversity and wildlife in the sustainability framework. And it made a big difference. There are not a lot of other cities where you see a breeding colony of breeding brooder owls, an ingrat colony, and more than 10 species of butterflies fluttering along city streets in North Bay Shore. And so I really think you should celebrate that. I think that have a great success of the city. I also hope that as you go ahead with your visioning process, you include nature and biodiversity and urban forest in your vision and people who represent that in your focus groups. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Inglis?
Good morning, mayor and council members. See what I can get into two minutes. I'm speaking for both Mountain View Coalition for Sustainable Planning and a new group in Mountain View called Green Spaces MV. And for green spaces, we just are interested in seeing an increase in in green space of all kinds. So tree canopy, native, drought-tolerant, pollinator-friendly planting, and that sort of thing. And development of programs that increase the amount of community involvement and collaboration with the city. So our letter goes into more detail. I'll, but I'll skip all of that. For Mountain View Coalition for Sustainable Planning, we've been talking a lot about processes that will improve our interactions for our group and other community groups as well. We'd like to see an increase in advisory body input. We feel that's not, there's just not enough of it. And would be great if minutes for the advisory body meetings could be reviewed by council at their meetings rather than just leaving it to, you know, if it happens, it happens. We'd like to see an earlier delivery of the packets, the meeting packets, even if they're partially delivered and then filled in later. An improvement on community input options. They're good right now, but they could be better. And management of meeting times, as you know, your meetings can go to one or two in the morning, and that's just too long. But we also don't want to have fewer meetings. So I know that's going to be a challenge, but whatever you can do would be great. A relaxation of the Brown Act requirements. It's, you're fairly conservative on how you implement that. We'd like to see more feedback directly to people who comment at meetings where it's allowed by the Brown Act. Advancing the CIP projects. There are a whole lot of them, and they all need to be done. And improvements to pedestrian and bicycle network throughout our city. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Cox?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Okay. Mayor Kamai, Vice Mayor Ramirez, and members of the city council. I'm Robert Cox, a 23, a 25-year Mountain View resident and member of the Steering Committee of Livable Mountain View. I'm here to advocate for livability as a key Mountain View goal. To support the goal, I would like the council to follow through on the five guidelines adopted by the previous council for revisions of the Downtown Precise Plan. Preserve historical buildings in District H. Determine what guidelines should be adopted so new buildings fit in with the old. Promote ground floor retail. Preserve and enhance pedestrian walkways. And restrict office development so that does not replace all existing uses. I would also like to advocate for taking up the Moffett Precise Plan to create a new, attractive, and vibrant Moffett area, which is an integrated extension of our downtown. Central, all this is a redesigned transit area and plaza design, which should be decided by a competitive process. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on your goal setting. The key point is livability should be a key Mountain View goal. Thank you if I yield my time.
Thank you. We'll move on to Louise Katz.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Louise Katz, multi-decade resident. I appreciate the opportunity to address the council and mayor. I wanted to also add, for speaking for Livable Mountain View Steering Committee, that one of the priorities should definitely be livability. It's the element that crosses all economic and ethnic lines. It's why people choose to live in Mountain View, why they choose to visit, spend money. The whole issue that we would like to also include as part of the priorities to consider is the need to have our historic downtown and public spaces sustained when everything reopens. This includes especially the plaza design for the Transit Center. This is, was part of the transit plan that went from 2015 to 2018. This is nothing new for Livable Mountain View has created. We learned when we were trying to advocate for a competitive design program that it could not start unless there was funding through the priorities given by the council. I urge you to look at the master plan summary, page fourteen, and it indicates that it requires an in-depth design process beyond that conducted for the master, for the Transit Center master plan. We would very much appreciate it if the council takes a vigorous effort, makes a vigorous effort to have a world-class design and that it be the legacy for this council. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Bea Hanson, please unmute.
Hi, Bea Hanson for Mountain View Mobile Home Alliance. I am, I'm pleased that the council is going to be working on affordable housing, but I'm also alarmed that the rates for rentals in Santiago Villa and Sahara Mobile Home Parks are now going down. Our landlord is now a major California water baron, and the financial shortfall he is now experiencing is very likely to boomerang on his most vulnerable residents as he tries to maintain his investments in the Central Valley and probably the Chicago Board of Trade. I just want to remind you that Mountain View is probably the only city in California that has rent control for apartment dwellers, but not mobile home residents. So while you're doing your good work on affordable housing, I hope you won't forget that mobile home parks are the only naturally affordable housing in, in Mountain View. And even after years of battling to stabilize our rents, we still need your help in getting mobile home rents under control. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you. Robin Lynn, please unmute.
Hey there. Thank you so much for your time. And this is just such an awesome forum. Really appreciate you doing this. I am a resident of Mountain View and I hope I have more than fifty-four seconds. Okay. Yeah, I've been trying to think of, I mean, I find that Mountain View is an amazing place to live. I've lived in the Bay Area my whole life and Mountain View is really amazing. And I've been trying to think of why it's such a great place to live. And I think it's really because we are trying to balance so many things, right? Like livability, growth, you know, jobs, everything. And, you know, contrast it with some of the cities that border our, our town and some cities are just not, you know, just, you know, they're immaculate parks, but good luck trying to live there. And so I think the beauty of Mountain View is that we are trying to do the hard thing of balancing so many different competing interests in the interest of making this a great and inclusive place to live. And I hope that as the city council tries to continue and staff tries to continue thinking about how to continue making Mountain View a great place to live. We really think about as we grow that every resident deserves the same access to the same city amenities that it provides, no matter what their housing looks like, what their economic situation is, whatever. Everybody deserves access to the same park space within walking distance, the same transportation options. They should always feel like they have dignity when they take their kids to a park, that the park is, you know, the same as any other park in Mountain View. I hope that we can continue trying to figure out how to make Roundview a great place to live because it is a great place. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Isaac Taylor? Okay, so Isaac, you have an older version of Zoom, so we need to promote you to a panelist so you're able to speak. So when that happens, please unmute.
Hi, this is Isaac Taylor. Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Okay, great. So I live with my wife and two children in Montaloma, one of the many neighborhoods here in Mountain View, isolated from the city center and the abundant green space on the other side of the train tracks and on the other side of the 101. I encourage the mayor, city council, staff and consultants working on the strategic planning to put the needs of the families and residents, the people of Mountain View first, as we work through the challenges here. Not to put the businesses first. Of course, COVID is the great challenge of our time, but I think we still have to grapple more effectively with the pre-existing challenge of balancing continuous pressure for corporate real estate development with the historical lack of new residential development and managed recreational open space. I see this as a tax equity issue because the people of Mountain View pay taxes, but the largest businesses here in the city basically don't. And as I recall, our recent thirty-year plan filled up all of the job growth that we expected over three decades in only a few years. Whereas we've yet to add the houses we need and the parks we need to ensure this city remains a wonderful, equitable place to live and raise children, not just to work. Lastly, Madam Mayor, if I still have time, do I?
City Clerk? We have only thirty-five seconds left.
Great. Lastly, of course, COVID makes life really hard and Zoom sort of, you know, sucks for everyone, pardon my French. But it also creates a really rare opportunity for the city staff and council to interact more with the community through this, you know, low-cost sort of digital teleportation. Let's take full advantage of that and try to increase engagement, communication and vigorous democratic planning. Because it's actually easier for us to come to these meetings.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Dashal Leeds?
Hello, my name is Dashal Leeds. I am the Conservation Assistant for the Sierra Club Loma Pita Chapter. I'd like to thank Mayor Kamai and the city council for my time. We hope that Mountain View continues to highly prioritize sustainability, social and environmental justice. And we support efforts to expand biodiversity within the city. And to that end, we're really looking forward to working with the city to implement green corridors. I'd also like to celebrate the city for passing your all-electric reach code. That really is an amazing policy and I think it's really had a ripple effect in the reach codes of other cities. And we're seeing climate action pick up. And I think the opportunities for climate action are going to be rapidly accelerating. And so I think there may be space for the city to accelerate its own planning processes as well around that. So we really hope you continue to prioritize climate action and taking action that will rapidly decarbonize your building and transportation sectors. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Bruce Carney?
Thank you very much. I'm not going to speak about my favorite topic. I'm going to talk a little bit about strategic planning, which is something I had experience with during my career at HP. When I think about private industry and government, the thing, the, the industry that a city government reminds me of the most is the hospitality industry. And I'll use the example of a cruise ship. If you're running a cruise ship, the vast majority of the employees of the cruise ship line are taking care of the passengers. They're preparing the meals, they're washing the linen, they're answering questions from guests, they're entertaining them. They're running the, the power plant, et cetera. And very few of the members of the crew are looking out into the far future to make sure that they're not going to steer the ship into a storm or figuring out what to do if a storm suddenly appears or if a COVID outbreak takes place on the ship. In private industry, particularly at HP, there were employees and departments that were dedicated to the R and D function. They did not have day-to-day responsibilities for taking care of the guests. They were really focused explicitly on the future. And teeing up this presentation, Lawrence and Christelle talked about the staff's perception that they're being stretched too thin between their ordinary daily duties and new projects being imposed on them. So I'd like to suggest that the city think about the separation between what I would call the R and D function and the operational functions of government. This is certainly a challenge. I don't know of other cities that have, you know, created that kind of separation, but it may address both the short-term feeling of overwork and also the need to really plan for a future that's very different from the recent past or even the present. Those, I hope, are helpful thoughts and I look forward to your progress in being a participant in the upcoming workshops.
Thank you. Jessica Chohin?
Hi, Eric. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Jessica Chohin. I'm a seven-year resident and I work full-time in Mountain View. I have a toddler and I live in a multi-generational family here. Thank you for spending your Saturday kicking off this important planning exercise. I'm really appreciative of this forum. I ask you to consider addressing two topics in your strategic plan. Number one is the environment and green space, including having an aggressive plan on making quality of life and health and wellness improvements in our community. These will serve current and future residents, and we must work harder to invest in equal and adequate access to open park space, enhanced park facilities, reduction in light pollution and other environmental initiatives, which will help combat climate change and enhance our day-to-day lives in the near term. This will also help ensure our community can continue to develop community strength. Mountain View's strength is in its diversity and parks, so where we can build this community strength. Number two, I ask you to consider transportation, which goes hand in hand with housing and job accessibility. Our transportation challenges are not locally solvable issues, but must be addressed through regional cooperation and leadership for Mountain View. Our roads and infrastructure are increasingly strained as Mountain View has grown and quality of life and accessibility to seniors is degrading as the population increases. We can increase access to affordable housing as well by improving our local and regional transportation infrastructure in addition to building locally. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Nazanim Tashar, please unmute.
Hello, city council, mayor, vice mayor. Thank you for this forum. I would like to, to level of Mountain View, add that, you know, kind of going along with the strategic planning, especially soon, hopefully post-COVID, integrating our diversity is such a priority and a competitive design by professionals who offer portfolios and ideas to make this space the gateway that we talk about in integrating our city. You know, from, from area to area. I've, I've heard other, the public address this multiple times. And then we talk about it, but we've never had it and we need to give it a chance. And I also want to stress that this would be the legacy of this council to adequately fund a plan for the people of Mountain View and integrate their access better and let the Transit Center be a place of connectivity and not of disconnectivity, so that we need to design and input from community and stakeholders as our strategic plan for the city, for the future. And, and that's basically our legacy and also find a way to have more input from the city, from the people and the stakeholders. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bruce Nagel?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we hear you.
Thank you for the opportunity to, to speak at this occasion. It's good to see that you're really looking to get input from, from the people on, in the city in order to move this forward. Mountain View has been a leader in sustainability and we need to keep working on, on moving that forward. As a leader that, that when a policy comes out that's aggressive, if we support that, it tends to encourage others to do that as well. And we see that with other cities as well. I mean, one of the interesting things that's happened is the folks in Meadow Park have come up with some very aggressive plans. For example, they want to reduce the gasoline consumption to zero by 2030, which means that they have a, a program that is measurable, that is actionable, that you can actually see what's going on with this and will have a big effect on things. So I'm hoping that Mountain View will continue to emphasize sustainability, look to become a leader in this and address the programs in a way that makes them easy to understand and, and perhaps easy to implement because each of the cities lean on each other for, you know, for being able to move forward. And I know that Mountain, Meadow Park, for example, looked at some of the plans that Mountain View has come together and developing their plans. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Alexander Brown?
Good morning.
Muni?
Okay. Thank you for being so transparent about the process here. As a member of many community organizations, I'd like to encourage civic makers to leverage the existing engagement of so many Mountain View residents in their outreach. I'd personally love to host a presentation and feedback session in our Mountain View Mobile Home Alliance meetings. Most of you know how to get to me. I'd also encourage using the advisory boards as sources of expertise and direction for what is needed and feasible in their respective domains. I look forward to working with all of you to craft a vision for the best Mountain View that we can imagine. And I'll save all the granular topic discussions for the many later outreach meetings. Thanks.
Thank you. April Webster?
Hello. In terms of two of the goals, first of all, transportation. I think that the high-level goal that council has is a very good one. But I would ask in terms of implementation, that three different things be considered. First, in terms of the alignment and integration of plans. Look to working on the bike plan and the pad plan as a unified active transportation plan, developing the ATP and vision plan together so that they can inform each other. And then also thinking more holistically at multimodal shift and stressing integration of these different modes of transportation. In terms of project implementation, I think the city is really good at creating and approving the plans, ranking, prioritizing. But I'd like to see a bit more on the implementation side in terms of, I guess explicitly articulating target dates and reporting out requirements. And then finally on transportation, green streets. So Mountain View has done a really good job of considering and starting to implement complete streets. But I think it would be good to start to begin the process of integrating green and sustainability elements to that. And I think the Sierra Club and Save the Bay are starting efforts on this front. It might be good to look to them. And then the second general sort of high-level goal would be housing and I would just urge council to continue to emphasize, you know, providing, working towards providing affordable housing and more dense development. Just echoing what Janet said in terms of countering gentrification and increasing diversity, equity and just richness of our community. I think many of the people who work in the service industry in our communities, the ones who basically keep our economy running, they run our grocery stores, deliver our groceries, our Amazon packages. They really can't afford to live in our community and I think it's critical that we provide housing for them so we don't lose these informed.
Thank you. Your time is up. Jim Zaworski?
Thank, thank you very much for listening today. Appreciate you taking your Saturday. I recently retired and having spent a long time in business and a lot of my business was in the state of Washington. Over thirty-five years, I saw the city of Bellevue go from something that looked like an exurb to something that has thirty-story buildings and it's a busy place and it's not, not a good place to live anymore. I can't see how that doesn't happen in Mountain View if we don't focus on that not happening. Counterpoint might be the Borough of Manhattan that has twice, ten times as many ten-acre parks, although it has only twice the area, because it was planned that way and we thought about it. I hardly agree I hardly agree with the people that talked about making this somebody's full-time job and making somebody's job accountability. We do a good job as a city, looking at particular projects and planning for those projects and making sure those projects think about things like sustainability and green space. But we also have to think about, what is the city going to look like 20 years from now? And how do we take care of housing for everyone? What's transportation going to look like? And unless that's somebody's full-time job, it becomes very difficult to do that and juggle that with what else everything has going on. Green space is important. The other thing that COVID does that is not going to go away in six months or a year is it makes it possible for somebody to do their job at Google while living in Vermont. And we have to say, are people going to want to live here? And what is that going to do to the quality of life in this city if people decide, no, it's too busy, there's not enough places for my children, and this is not the kind of place I want to raise my family? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Saleem Demer Dij.
I'm Saleem. I work in Mountain View. I hope that Council priorities is housing in particular. It falls squarely on the city's plate, so you can make the biggest impact from housing, and it's also the nexus of so many other issues, like the environment, social justice, and our local economy. So in particular with the environment, transphobic development is an investment in transit, help get people into multimodal transit. And building near jobs reduces sprawl, but it's causing the fires we live with. In terms of social justice, there's a history of racial covenants in the area. And Rothstein's Call of Log, Rothstein points out that Mountain View officials, in particular, turned down a racially integrated workforce, housing for the workforce for a local factory. So this really does fall on our plate. We have a unique obligation to make sure that we continue the unfinished work of desegregation, and that means making the city open to everybody. So we need to have more homes, particularly when Berkeley researchers have found that single-family zoning is correlated with segregation. And then finally, in terms of like the asks, I think we need to nail the North Bay Shore Plan. It's a lot of affordable housing that we can get access to, so I hope we can do this efficiently. There's the R3 zoning update that we can also get right. I hope that we upzone R1 areas too, so that way, you know, we have four complexes the way cities like Sacramento have done. And finally, I hope we lead on the housing element. These are four great opportunities to make the town more inclusive. And one last thing, when the next housing element cycle ends, I'm going to be 35. Most of my friends will be married, but we're looking for a home to settle down in. And this next housing element cycle basically decides how likely it is for us to be able to settle down in a town that we know well, like Mountain View. So for me, this is very personal. I hope we get housing done right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Daddio.
Hi, Mary Daddio here. City Council has focused on sustainability and reducing our carbon footprint for a number of years, and there have been some great achievements, such as creation of Silicon Valley Clean Energy and adoption of electric REACH code more recently. Because climate change is such a large, complex issue, which needs continued focus, I'd like to ask that you include climate action as a focus of the city. Transportation especially needs more focus. With all the new housing, car-based transportation alone cannot continue to work for us. We need to make it easy for people to switch to other forms of transportation. But if those alternatives aren't there, then people can't switch, and we'll just be living with gridlock. Similarly, expanding tree canopy, green space, and creating green networks is also very important to improve sustainability, address climate change, and just for quality of life. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. That's all the public comment that I have, so I'd like to turn it back over to Mr. Godeska and Ms. Blackford to keep things going for us. And I know that we had the goal of trying to complete everything by about 1:40, so just wanted to put that time check in there as well. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mayor Kame. Let me share my screen here again. Thank you for all that public comment. We've definitely taken notes and also encourage you to all keep showing up for the other opportunities we have, but we've noted what you've shared and greatly appreciate it. This is a wonderful way to kick off the planning process with so much thoughtful feedback from the public. With that, we are going to get into the council dialogue portion of the planning segment of this retreat. We do have a pretty extensive agenda here to get through vision, mission statement, and collecting input on potential priorities. So we're going to move quickly and I want to run through some ground rules before we get started. Realize that we are in an era where we're all a little tired of Zoom meetings, hoping that this quick pace will keep us engaged, and we can all be here now for the important conversations that we'll have in the next hour and a half or so. One speaker at a time, that's a lot easier on Zoom. But when we do speak, hoping that you can step up the voice of your thoughts and then step back to allow time for other people to speak to, to be additive, not repetitive, and we have some exercises to help us be efficient in that way. Listen actively and seek to understand your council members and keep an open mind. And we're going to really push you to pursue areas of agreement. Consensus means I can live with it. And I heard Mr. Larson talk about consensus, and it sounds like you all are well-versed in that process, so that's great to know. Finally, help us keep things on time. Wanted to note that really our intention for today, as we've mentioned a couple of times, is to capture the intent of your feedback. We're not going to be wordsmithing. We're not going to be approving anything. This is the start of our planning process. We are considering this our official kickoff to gather feedback from council members as to a new vision statement and mission statement and revising the major goals or strategic priorities for the organization. We're also going to listen in to staff and the community and coming back in mid-March and synthesizing all that when there'll be more of a time to do some deeper conversation and start to approve things so we can move forward. So we're going to be really pushing to make sure we understand your feedback on what we present so that we understand your intentions and can, as best as possible, integrate that with what we hear from the other stakeholders in this process. And I also want to know, again, emphasize, and to members of the public that had certain projects that came up, we will note those, but this is not a moment for us to talk about strategic projects yet. We have asked for your input, council members, on potential projects, but that's just to get a head start, because we do need to move to projects very quickly to get aligned with the upcoming budget process. But we are using our time today to grant ourselves really in the strategic fundamentals and the longer-term aspects of our roadmap. With that, I want to roll right into our visioning section. To revisit our definition for vision, a vision is a clear and compelling picture of what the city will look like in three to five years. We asked each of the council members to share their thoughts on what they see, hear, and feel for the city of Mountain View in the next three to five years. When we say "city," we mean the holistic perspective or conception of a city, the place, the community, the people, what life and culture and the day-to-day looks like, feels like, and what it sounds like in the next three to five years. So wanted to share what we heard from you all and then share a draft vision statement and get your feedback on that. So what do you see? You see a lot of the same things that the community just shared with us. Green space, parks, tree-lined corridors, a lot of real strong alignment around that from council members. A lot of talk about a downtown that's vibrant and quaint, thoughtfully preserved historic buildings, really a hub, a bustling hub for economic and business hubs, and amenities for residents to get what they need to, their business done in downtown. A safe and strong transportation network throughout the entire city connected to downtown, bike and pedestrian spaces, public transit, and transportation solutions such as road diets. Some of the tactics we've seen come up in the pandemic response. A lot of talk of diverse housing types and a bustling diverse community inhabiting them. And a couple of council members shared that they, in three to five years, hope that there's a really a strong sense that we're on the road to recovery from the pandemic. Along with that, lower on the, sort of the ranking here, but still shared, clean air, clean urban streets, strong schools, and a few thoughts on architecture and development from varied architecture, some transformation of current infrastructure and NFS that might be put to better use down the road, and duration of ecology and public art and murals. So that's what we see. That's what you all see when you think about the Mountain View of your dreams in the next three to five years. What do you hear? I, as an avid bird watcher, love to see that there was four of you all that said you want to hear birds, and I can't think of anything that's more indicative of peace and happiness and joy than the chirping of birds and wildlife. Along with that, laughter, children playing, again, these are what you all, what the future should look like, what you want it to look, sound like. Additionally, people talking, signs of happiness, compassionate and caring community, music and theater, that idea of a hubbub of a well-utilized public space and quiet areas to escape in downtown. And then also hearing just fewer cars and less caltrain because of electrification and road decongestion. So that's all beautiful stuff, and I personally agree with it, and it resonates with me. And then what do you feel? And this is one of my favorite parts of a visioning exercise. You know, what's the felt sense of the future for you so that we can orient ourselves towards that? Safe, hopeful, a sense of progress. Those were shared by multiple council members. In addition, relaxed, renewed, proactive in making progress, pragmatic, but happy about the growth that's happening instead of sort of overwhelmed or questioning the growth. Sense of belonging and community, secure self-actualization, which I thought was beautiful, and meaningful participation, healthy and sheltered. So with that, we put together a draft vision, and I'm just going to go back to this next slide. This vision statement is intended to really be evocative of those felt senses and emotional states for that future vision. It's on the longer side than what you might be normally used to as far as a vision statement. And this vision statement is the emotional and kind of sensual, if you will, grounding of what that future looks like that we can always come back to as a way to ground our work. And that work could be a goal, that could be a strategic project, that could be, you know, my workday. So we put together this vision. I'm going to read through it to you, and then we're going to walk you through an exercise to let us know what parts really resonate and what parts might be some questions or you want to talk through. To be efficient with our time, we're going to focus on the areas that feel like they're a little unclear or there might be a little less alignment. But just want to let you know what's coming up ahead, so I'll read through this, and then we'll pause and talk about the specific feedback mechanisms that we're looking to do on the Zoom call. So with that, here is, and I will say again, this is a synthesis of your feedback or input on vision for the city of Mountain View. We'll be doing the same for department heads next week, and we'll also be doing the same with the community. So it'll be really lovely to see how those three different visions align and can come together in one really city-wide, community-wide vision. With that, enough preamble. So a draft vision. By 2025, the diverse inhabitants of Mountain View are brimming with hope for brighter days ahead. Despite varied challenges, the city has maintained its push for good growth that meets the needs of residents centered around the quaint yet vibrant downtown. The hubbub of a well-utilized public space as residents get their business done is balanced by quiet areas amongst a variety of beautiful architectural styles and thoughtfully preserved historic buildings. The neighborhoods surrounding downtown are dotted with open green space and connected by a safe, strong network of transit options. The reduction of vehicle trips has resulted in more pedestrian and bicycle traffic, as well as a noticeable return of the sounds of a happy, healthy city, birds and wildlife, relaxed conversations, children's laughter. These signs of a connected community are anchored in a wide range of housing types that provide security and shelter for all residents, no matter their socioeconomic status. Continuing on, this is the second and final slide of our vision. Draft vision. The success of the city's housing efforts has resulted in a strong sense of progress and equity, which in turn has created a fertile environment for a thriving economy. Local small businesses offer a wide range of services, and these enterprises are increasingly housed in creative, dynamic, mixed-use infill redevelopments of transformed strip malls and office buildings. This vibrant place in the economy have fostered a renewed sense of shared culture and purpose. The results of the city government's proactive efforts, the results of the city government's proactive efforts inspire residents, workers, and visitors to more meaningfully participate in civic life. There's a broad recognition of the compassionate, caring community that is Mountain View. Okay, take it in, breathe it in, see how that feels, try it on for size. This is not going to be perfect. The intention of this draft vision is really to just get your feedback. This is going to be a very iterative process, starting now. And just know that there's going to be many opportunities to really shape this into something that everyone is comfortable with. With that, here's how we're going to do our feedback. We're going to use a little-known feature of Zoom, it's Zoom's annotation tool, and these are the steps to get there. We're going to play around with this right now. What you need to do is if you look at the top of your Zoom window, you will see the little green box there that says, excuse me, you are viewing Lawrence Godeska's screen. Right next to that, there'll be a view options dropdown menu. You want to click on that dropdown menu and select annotation. So I'm going to stop there and let all council members make sure that they can pull up. Once you select annotation, you should see that annotation bar that is there. If you have not been able to get that annotation bar up, please raise your hand. Does that mean that we have our first step here? Yes. Success. Okay, so with that, we're going to click on format, and when you click on format, you'll see, hey! We already see some annotation from the Vice Mayor. That's what we're asking you to do, is we're asking you to select the format icon and then select these two color tiles, green and red, and highlight, just try them out right now. What we're going to be asking you to do is highlight parts of the draft vision that you are in agreement with or in disagreement with. So right now on this screen, I want each of you to select one of those color tiles and try to just draw on the screen. And if you're having any problems at all, oh, I see one, see some, great. And I will also do this as well. And what we're looking for you to do, I'm going to highlight the title slide. And that's what we're going to look for you to do, is highlight the parts on the vision that either using green are in agreement with or red want to talk about. Is that cleared? Are all the council members, are any council members not able to do that annotation underlining? Okay, I'm not seeing anything. So with that, let's move to the next slide. I get to, as the facilitator here, clear all of our drawings and start fresh, and I'm going to move to our next slide. So I'm going to give you all a couple of minutes on this slide to go through with the annotation tools that we just used, and underline in green the phrases or sentences that you love. Stick to underlining if you could, instead of circling. And then in red, underline the areas that you'd like to talk through. So if you could all, we'll take a couple of minutes to do this. It might take a little while to get through both paragraphs, but we want to make sure that you all have a chance to really use this as a way to guide our conversation. This is where I need some Jeopardy! music. Or maybe some smooth jazz elevator music to... Classical music. Some people use classical music to focus. All right, I'm liking all the green we're seeing. All right. If there's anything that doesn't align with you or feels like it's not part of your vision, would love to see that, those red annotation as well. Great. All right, when you've had enough time to add, well, I'm just going to wait, I see people still adding red annotations, so. Children's laughter, double underlined. As a new father, I appreciate that. Someone's getting creative and writing some words. And we will have, too wordy, okay, we will have time to get this, have a discussion around this feedback. Okay, anything else? Are people feeling complete? If you need more time, okay, if you feel like you're done, please give a thumbs up or raise your hand. All right, thumbs up, thumbs up, thumbs up, thumbs up. Okay. Great, I'm seeing thumbs up from everyone. So Marielle, if you could just take a screenshot of that if you haven't already. I do want to give a shout out to our third civic maker's team member, Marielle Olentino, who's with us and taking notes and supporting us from behind the scenes. All right, I'm going to clear our annotations and move on to our next slide. So please do the same on this slide and I'll provide random banter to distract you. Very glad to see the overlap and then the alignment around a lot of the draft vision so far. And I know there's probably things that are missing for you, so we will have a chance to talk about that too. It is hard to disagree with any of this and that's true. I'll talk more about that in a moment. All right, and if you are feeling complete with your feedback on this slide, if you can give me a thumbs up. Thank you. Almost there, a couple more. All right.
Sorry, I'm not sure you can see the handout from the vice mayor.
Great, thank you. Yeah, vice mayor, do you have a question?
Thank you. And you may, you may get to this later and my apologies if I'm anticipating this, but I, I'm struggling with understanding how we would utilize the vision statement. This is something I've shared with the city manager in our conversations leading up to this. There's a lot of nice stuff here, but it's not clear to me how it's applicable to our policymaking or our, you know, how it changes operations.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And let me just make sure that, I'll come back to that before we get into the discussion. So thank you for that clarifying question. Has everyone had a chance to share their feedback on this slide? Looks like everyone's done. Okay, fantastic. So Marielle, if you could capture that screenshot and then if you could share it with me in our chat so that I can reference it in our conversation, that would be great. Okay, and I'm going to clear our screen and okay, so let me just walk back and get us on. Sure, this is a good slide to stop on. So the, the way that we approach strategic planning is that to be able to understand what's the most important thing for us to do right now, we need to have our end goal in mind. We need to know where we're going and we need to know that there's agreement and alignment on what that destination is. Walking backwards from that, we start to extract more specificity around the specific areas that we think are necessary to achieve that vision. So I think you can probably already see that in this vision statement, there's a lot of representation of the city council's current major goals of community housing, environments, mobility, transportation and environment quality of life. So the first layer of abstraction from a vision becomes those strategic priorities. And then from there, those strategic priorities get mapped into specific projects that we think are the most critical to, again, work our way towards that vision. What's important with the vision is that, and I think the reason why city manager McCarthy really wanted to take this opportunity as the first part in this strategic roadmap process is that making sure that this vision is representative of all the important stakeholders in this process. We heard from public during public comment that people should be first. Obviously, there's obligations that city staff have to California regulations or other necessities as part of their public service duties. And then the council has its own vision for individually and as a governing body. So this visioning process aligns us around that direction. It also gives us a process to understand, and this touches a little bit with what Mr. Larson was talking about, just where our alignment and overlap is and remind us of that we do have a lot of shared vision. Even if we can get caught in some of the prioritization around what's most important to do when, the vision is a grounding in the fact that ultimately we all want mostly the same thing, which is a beautiful community that supports a diverse set of residents to live happy, fulfilling lives with families and meaningful employment that meets their needs. So it's a little bit of a, it's the most high level thing that we will do and it can be difficult to get there, but our goal as consultants in the process we'll be developing with you is to make sure that there's a direct line of sight at that yearly objective level in the Hayward example that Christel shared with you, right up to the vision, so that we can always know that each thing that we are doing is in service of getting to that final destination or that three to five year destination. Is that helpful?
Yes, and I guess as a quick follow up, I think it was in the presentation, maybe helping us better understand the accountability mechanisms that we use to make sure we're actually making progress to achieving the vision. That's, I think, the one thing that I'm not totally clear on.
Yeah, we will get to that. There is a moment in this process down the road where we will talk about what we call an organizational cadence that is a regular rhythm by which we revisit our success in achieving the objectives we lay out for ourselves and revisiting what's most important. And that'll happen on different intervals. It might be quarterly for staff, it might be biannually, annually for council and staff, it might be every two years for priority areas, it might be longer for a vision and mission. But part of this process will be to map out not only the timeline for those checkpoints, but also the metrics by which we are holding ourselves accountable to. So we will get there. Just know that right now we are starting at the very bottom floor to make sure that we're all in alignment. With that, I want to go into a conversation about what we heard that was, and again, we're going to focus on sort of the areas that were a little, oh, I'm still on annotation tool, that's what's happening here. Okay, we're going to focus on the areas in the vision that folks just kind of highlighted and read that wanted to talk through. The first one right up at the top was that someone underlined by 2025. What I'm going to do right now as far as process is just ask council members to speak to anything that was underlined. We have about, let's see, 25 minutes. Excuse me, no, we don't. We probably only have about 15 minutes for this conversation, so we're going to need to move quickly. But I want to make sure that we understand what these comments of disagreement were. Does anyone want to speak to why 2025 was underlined? Sorry, I can't see names here. There we go. Council member Madachak.
Thanks. I just felt like, for me, a vision is long term and I didn't want to imply that it kind of ends in 2025. Yeah, that's the main reason I underlined it.
Perfect, thank you. Anything to add to that, council member Lieber?
Yeah, I also underlined that because I really feel like people are, in our community are suffering right now with a lot of uncertainty, a lot of economic challenges. We have a massive level of displacement. And I think that it could be seen as really insensitive to people to say that in three to four years, everything's going to be great and there's going to be birds singing and everybody's going to be happy. Because the lasting impact, I think, of COVID and of some of the mental health challenges that are out there in the community and the economic damage is going to be a lot. And I think that visions should be, for at least 10 years, three to four years is, I think, doesn't pass the test for whether something is real or not.
Great, I appreciate that. And, you know, all of this will be part of what we developed together, the timing. And that relates to some of what Vice Mayor Ramirez just asked about, what we call this, what our major goal is strategic priorities. So all this feedback is incredibly useful as we put together and adopt a strategic roadmap framework that works best for all of you. And I really do appreciate the timing on that. Council member Hicks, and then we'll move on to the next red.
So I didn't underline this, but I did think about it. And the way I'm thinking about timing is that I think we're in an unusual place, I know we are because we're in the pandemic, where some, well, I should back up and say, I really love this vision. It's much more than I expected to be in agreement with. And I think it's partly because of my background as a city planner. It sees the city as a physical place, which sometimes I feel we get lost in the bureaucratic weeds, which I expected to as a council member, but we lose that, you know, physically, where are we going? Yet when I talk to residents, that's what we talk about all the time, as you could see from public comment. It's the physical city. So basically, I love it. The timing though, I have a question about, so maybe I should have underlined it because I see us in an unusual place where, because of the pandemic, we may be, or I think we'll be reevaluating a tremendous number of things from, you know, people buying things online and small businesses going out of business. And then what council member Lieber brought up of, you know, people have just more displacement than before, housing situations. So I do have a question, the question that the other council members brought up, maybe we even need two elements of time. I'll leave it at that, but Jeff, I really like it.
Yeah, great, thank you. And again, I would just reiterate what I would try to express earlier is that, you know, a vision really should be in a much longer timeframe. Some of this is just structured to get your feedback, including some dates. And then the priorities become shorter timelines and then projects is shorter. So we will get into that, the cadence, just wanted to call it that. Council member Abicoga.
Thank you. I really appreciate this exercise. I just had a question. I'm wondering, we actually did a visioning process and have a vision for our general plan of the update we did, been a while now, but how does this mesh with something like that?
Yeah, that's a great question. And, you know, I think that that's one of the things that we would want to integrate in this process here in the next month and a half. So we have been talking to staff about that. Ideally, they're not too far apart, but obviously the goal of that document, that planning document is very different than the strategic roadmap, so very open to thoughts about that, especially for those parts of the organization that really rely on the general plan. I know the general plan doesn't direct the day-to-day work for everybody, but I certainly hope as part of this process, and we have been talking about it, staff has mentioned that all the important planning documents, you know, are considered as far as integration here, both not only the timing of the process of planning, but also the end vision, if you will. So thank you for bringing that up.
If I could.
Okay, last comment and then we do need to move on because we are definitely, yeah, we need to keep moving, please.
I agreed with everything here, but that was kind of the disconnect for me because the one area I see different was, if I remember correctly, in the general plan update, it was about having village centers throughout the city connected together. And this one to me read as that downtown is a center and then moving out, so.
Great, that's a, yeah, I really appreciate that. That's very helpful feedback. Thank you, thank you all. And I guess, so there's two more sort of red on the lines here. Despite varied challenges, did anyone have any quick comments on that? It was like one person underlined that. Council member Madachak?
Yeah, I underlined that. Somehow I felt like I wanted this to all be positive. Even though we have some challenges, I just felt like I wanted a really positive vision.
Okay, great, thank you for that quick feedback. How about quaint as an adjective of downtown? Council member Scholter, saw your hand first. Do you need help with mute?
Yeah, I'm reaching the mute.
Yeah.
We're hearing you now. Oh, good. Okay, I was just going to say quaint is one of those words that has both positive and negative connotations. Sometimes it is viewed as sort of historical or some homey. Sometimes it's viewed as old fashioned and not up to snuff and just kind of unsophisticated. And so I think that I would rather we had, you know, we talked about a vibrant downtown. And also I just think that there's too many words here for this. I was thinking that kind of getting to the point a little more, but that's it. It's the quaint has both negative and positive connotations and I think, so it's not as clear.
Great, thank you. Council member Hicks?
Yeah, so I would totally agree that quaint has some, maybe some bad connotations. And the other thing about the downtown is I really see with our, the, what we call the grade separation, but the underpass under the train station and the electrification that, and what some of the members of the public talked about, that our downtown can be both sides of the train station now. And actually, if we're doing, you know, transitory redevelopment, it should be. You know, we shouldn't just completely overlook the other half of the area that's touching our main transportation center. So I don't, so, but I do, I think maybe you used the word quaint because you wanted to embody the historic nature of some of our downtown, which I do think is important. And so yet, on the other hand, and I don't think that the other, the Moffett half of our downtown, I don't think has to be, or I hope it doesn't become some sort of fake historic. You know, I think it should be modern, reflect what it is. So I don't want to get into wordsmithing, but I think there could be a better word. I would like to, you know, make sure that the vision encompasses that the historic, small historic center of our downtown remain historic, but we're open to other things for what I think is the rest of a bigger and growing downtown.
Great, thank you. And quaint was used, it was feedback from someone, so that's why it was included. And quaint was used, it was feedback from someone, so that's why it was included. But we will get to the intention behind your feedback noted, and then we will get to that wordsmithing down the road. Okay, I'm going to move on to our next slide here. And there was a number of underlines around the word renewed in that final paragraph here. Anyone that we haven't heard from want to share their thoughts to start? Mayor, Vice Mayor?
Sure, sure. I underlined renewed. So, you know, I would hope that our community is a vibrant place and economy. And I think perhaps the renewed might have come there after the, you know, navigating the pandemic. But I don't know if it would be renewed, would be the word choice that I would use. And I think rather, similar to the comments earlier colleagues, you know, we're really trying to create a place and have more of a place-making community feel. And I worry that the renewed might not be inclusive.
Great, thank you for sharing that. There's a few other folks that also underlined that word. Anyone want to share their perspective on that word? Or that sentence? Or did the mayor's comments capture most of it? And that was in response to the, well, bouncing back from the pandemic. So definitely, yeah, we can find a better way to talk about that. Great, there was, in the last sentence, there was someone that underlined participate in civic life. And then in red, and then someone underlined the last sentence, broad recognition of the compassionate care community in yellow. Does anyone want to speak to the participate in civic life first? Yeah, Councilmember Madachak? I'm sorry, Madachak?
Madachak.
Madachak, great, thank you.
No worries. For me, what I felt like was sort of missing in that statement, I feel like the result of everything we do enables residents, workers, and visitors to have a great quality of life. Rather than meaningfully participate in civic life. So I'm shooting for more a great quality of life.
Got it, great, okay, thank you. Appreciate that. And how about that last sentence that someone had underlined in yellow? Councilmember Lieber?
It was me.
Yeah.
I think that it's always better to demonstrate it than to proclaim it. And again, going back to where people are at, we've had an unprecedented level of untimely death in our community and in our area, and an unprecedented level of displacement. And so I hate to be the voice of doom and gloom, but that's kind of where I go naturally, especially during these times. And I think that people, when they're displaced from an apartment building and it's torn down, and their children are separated from their school and they have to move to very distant places. It's, or they're threatened with it. They don't really know where to put that. They don't put it specifically, maybe in the area that it comes from, but it's the community overall. And a lot of people are feeling threatened in their situations right now. And that's my comments.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that. So what I'd like to do is a lightning round of anything that's missing, and then we'll move on to the mission. So 30 seconds here so that we can just really capture what else you'd like to see in the vision. And then, like I said, we need to move on to the mission. So Councilmember Hicks, you want to start?
Many members of the community mentioned green corridors as opposed to, I forget how it reads, just green spaces dotted around is maybe how you said it. So that might be included. And other members of the, somebody from the public texted me and asked whether any of their comments will be included in any way in the vision statement or somewhere else. So I have that question as well.
Yeah, and just to emphasize, we will be doing a community exercise to also get their direct feedback about the vision, their vision for the city of Mountain View. So we are taking notes of the comments during this meeting and all council meetings as part of the engagement for this process. But we will also be through focus groups in the open meetings in end of this month and beginning of March, asking directly for that feedback. So they will be heard. Vice Mayor Ramirez?
Thank you. So I want to respond to something Councilmember Madachak said. I do agree with her that quality of life is a key outcome of all of our work. But I do think that participation in civic life or shared governance, something along those lines, is an important value as well. So I don't necessarily want to supplant one with the other, but see both of them, I think, prominently incorporated into the vision.
Fantastic, thank you. Councilmember Abicoga?
Thank you. Yes, one thing I've always valued with our city is innovation. I think that's what's made us successful. And I was kind of surprised, I was trying to remember what I wrote down, but that didn't, that word didn't show up. And I think it really is key to a lot of, you know, what we do and our success. And not just like the businesses, but even in terms of our government work. So I would like to include that somewhere.
Got it, thank you, duly noted. Councilmember Scholter?
Yeah, it might be on the first page, but on this page, I don't see anything related to the city being seen as a leader in sustainability and that we're, you know, we're doing our best to protect our part of the planet.
Great, thank you. Mayor Kame, anything to add from your perspective as far as what's missing? No, great. Okay, Councilmember Madachak, one more thought?
Right, do you want us to weigh in if we agree with other council members? So you have like two or three comments?
If you have something to share, sure, and that would be great.
I agree about sustainability. I also agree with the comment about the village centers that Councilmember Abicoga stated, and then quality of life and livability.
Okay, great, thank you. Yeah, appreciate all those thoughts. And we will do our best to incorporate those and then take note of those all-important additions. With that, we're going to move on to the next segment here, which is about our, the organization's mission statement. So I'm going to pass it over to Christelle.
Thank you. And I will do a quick time check that we're about 13 minutes behind schedule. So I'm going to do this as quickly as we can so we can jump into hearing from all of you. So return to our definition here. A mission is the defining purpose of an organization at its most fundamental level. So I just want to emphasize that this is, this part is really focused on the organization. It's internally focused. The purpose being the reason that the city exists is what we're trying to get at together here. So your current mission statement is the city of Mountain View provides quality services and facilities that meet the needs of a caring and diverse community in a financially responsible manner. We shared with you some example mission statements from other cities and asked what you liked and disliked. And here's what we heard. The number indicates that there were councilpeople who echoed this same sentiment. So what you liked, several of you thought that you liked the particular mission statements that were succinct, the ones that were focused on residents and what the city does for the community. Many of you also liked the upbeat and vibrant nature of some of the mission statements we shared. Universally supported values and aspirational, or some other things that came up in what you liked. What you disliked about the ones we shared, some of them were too broad and vague and lacked detail. Three of you agreed on that. Some of you also shared that they were potentially, that a sole focus on city operation seemed limiting, not useful in guiding actual work, focused on safety, and not reflective of place. And then we gave you essentially like a Mad Libs exercise and asked you to share your answers to the following questions, which helped us draft some draft missions that we'll share with you today. So here's what we heard. What does the, when we asked you what does the city do? You filled in the blank with, many of you, provides high-quality core services, promotes and maintains diverse community, maintains and develops infrastructure, promotes public safety, increases housing options, good stewards of the land. And there also were some of you who mentioned transportation, public works, parks, and rec. Then we asked, what does the city help primarily? We had five of you say residents. And there are some specifics here, noncitizen and citizen, nonvoting and voting alike, so that inclusivity piece. Businesses in the city came up equal weight to residents, and then also workers and visitors. And then we asked you, what does the city help them do? Or why, sorry, why does the city help them? So in response to the why, you had a healthy community requires diversity because residents are what make up the city. Residents invest in their community, great quality of life for residents, again, thriving businesses, land use planning, and shared needs. And finally, we asked about the outcome. So what is the result of the city's work? We have livable, attractive city, business-friendly community and economic vitality, diversity and inclusivity, and then safety, well-maintained infrastructure, public parks, trails, public squares, and environmental sustainability. All right. Oh, and we also asked you to share some adjectives to describe the city's purpose. So we got high quality, advocate for the community, comprehensive service, and challenging. So then we took your Mad Libs responses and we put together some possible mission statements. So I'm going to read through these four. And then I'm going to give you the instruction for how we're going to get your thoughts and feedback on each of these. And again, we want to capture the intent here, we're not wordsmithing. So number one, in service of equity, sustainability, and community. Number two, ensuring opportunity for all. Number three, we create the conditions for an inclusive, prosperous, and beautiful place for all. And four, provide for the opportunity, equity, and happiness of all residents. So let you absorb those briefly. And then I'm going to explain our feedback process here.
Next slide?
Next slide. And we'll show these each in turn. So as we go through each of these, the first one is there at the top in red. So we're going to do this in an analog way. I'm going to have you all hold up fingers here to vote. So one finger would be strongly disagree, two is disagree, three is neutral, four is I agree, and five is I strongly agree. And that is you're specifically rating your agreement with the statement. This mission accurately captures the purpose of the government of the city of Mountain View. So this describes why the city government exists. Okay, so let me just pause and ask if anybody has any clarifications on our process there. We're going to capture feedback and then we're going to briefly discuss areas of strong disagreement or disagreement. Okay, so let's start with this first one. And I'll ask you to just hold your hands up until I ask you to stop. Or until I ask you to put them down so we can make sure we record what everyone's got. So go ahead and give your vote on this particular mission in service of equity, sustainability, and community. All right, so Lawrence is taking down your votes. We have Ramirez five, Hicks four, Abicoga five, Madachak three, Kame four, Lieber five, Scholter five.
Got it.
All right, great, thank you. Okay, now Lawrence, let's go to the next one. We'll just go through all of these and then we'll take a pause. So ensuring opportunity for all, go ahead and give us your votes on that. Okay, we have a range here. I got Scholter three, Madachak five, Lieber five, Hicks one, Abicoga five, Ramirez five, Kame five.
Got it.
Great, all right. And now we will move to the next one. All right, this one is we create the conditions for an inclusive, prosperous, and beautiful place for all. Just keep your hands up while we record these. Kame three, Ramirez five, Abicoga four, Hicks four, Lieber. Did I get yours? I can't quite see your hand. Councilmember Lieber, three. And Madachak three, and Scholter one. All right, great. And then the last one here is.
Oh, sorry.
Thanks, Lawrence, I know you're multitasking there. Provide for the opportunity, equity, and happiness of all residents. All right, we have Kame two, Ramirez four, Abicoga.
And Councilmember Lieber? Councilmember Lieber, have four or five?
Four.
Four, great.
Four, okay, I mean, I've got Hicks one, Madachak two, Scholter two.
Got it.
All right, great.
I was a four.
I'm a four.
Yeah. I'm just a four too, as well, I mean.
Okay, Kame four.
And Madachak four.
Madachak four, great, okay. Okay, so we're going to do some quick calculation here. I'm just going to look at which ones got the most agreement and disagreement. And then, yeah, we're going to just look at, so this overall slide here. I'm just going to say what the overall agreement was on the first one. And since the first one has a lot of agreement, we've got mostly fours and fives with one three from Madachak. I don't know if we have any specific comments on that one. Yes, Councilmember Hicks?
Yeah, I'd say this was generally my preferred one. I think one of the reasons I like the balance of sustainability, community, and equity. I just should say I have an aversion to the word opportunity. It sounds, I much prefer equity. Opportunity, to me, sounds very competitive. It sounds like we're going to throw all the residents into some kind of equal opportunity competition and some of them just may not measure up. And my ethic is more to, you know, things for all, whether it's housing or park space or whatever. So that's why I prefer one over, number one over the ones with the word opportunity in it.
Great, that's helpful, thank you. And Councilmember Lieber, go ahead.
Well, it's really hard to vote against happiness. I actually, I can't imagine where this is all going in terms of a statement. I think that our, just plain one that we've had, you know, if there can be maybe a couple of words put in there or something, I like the number one. But I'm a little bit uncomfortable with this because for people that are facing losing their home because they haven't been able to pay their rent, this could be our let them eat cake moment, the fact that we're going through this process and paying money for it. So just a little bit uncomfortable.
Okay, thank you for sharing that. We've captured that. I want to move, so the. I want to move, so the comment that we had from Councilmember Hicks addressed both one and two, and I know number, the number two, ensuring opportunity for all, you had some concerns with and you had the lowest rating on that. The rest of the folk, you folks had fives and Shawalter one, three. So I don't know if there's any other specific comments on number two. If not, we'll move to the third one. We create the conditions for an inclusive, prosperous and beautiful place for all. And that has a mix with Shawalter having the lowest rating at number, at a one. Shawalter, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I kind of like Councilmember Lieber. I just very sort of uncomfortable with this. I'm the only engineer in the group and I think that really puts me at a disadvantage for this kind of exercise in the first place. But I, I just, I don't see where we're going. And the idea that we're creating a beautiful place for all. I mean, I'm certainly not against that. I think it's a good idea, but I, I just don't know where we're going with that. It makes me uncomfortable. So I, I feel like we create the conditions for an inclusive and prosperous community is, that's something I, I really feel strongly about. And then maybe a separate one is, is, you know, we, we design a beautiful city. We design and maintain, you know, our property beautifully or something along those lines. But this is just, it's, it doesn't grab me properly.
That's really helpful feedback. And just to respond to both of those, your comments about kind of, you know, where this leading us. You know, we, just to like, to go back to the definition, like, we're really trying to capture kind of like the, the reason for being of the city in terms of the operational side of the city. Why does the city government exist? So I think that's helpful that if you think it's not, you know, that's out of our purview is maybe what I hear you saying or it seems inappropriate to talk about something as broad as happiness and opportunity. It's like where you want to focus a little bit more specifically on where does the city have leverage to influence?
Yeah, I think we can help create opportunity. I definitely think we can do that and we should. And we can help and create beauty. But I really think that our, you know, our reason for being is honestly core services.
Okay, that's helpful. And I, there's a couple other hands raised. So we have Councilmember Matichak, let you go ahead, and then Lieber and Ramirez.
Thank you. I, I kind of like the starting point of our existing mission. Maybe it needs a few tweaks, but I kind of like it better than any of these. But specifically on number three, I also was not real crazy about the word beautiful. Maybe it's sustainable. But, you know, we can do our best to create situations, but we can't ensure or guarantee everyone who either lives here or visits here or works here is going to experience the same thing. And so I think we do our best to create conditions, but it kind of ends there. Thanks.
Thank you. And I'll go to Councilmember Lieber.
Well, I love the, the beauty and the happiness and everything. And I can't remember if, what country or maybe it was just Santa Monica that said that their purpose is happiness for all. And I think that's really, really beautiful. But I think also we have to balance it with, this is, I'm pretty sure the first year that we're going to be in a deficit. And we're going to be in a deficit for all of the years that this plan is going to take place. So I think kind of something that I'm sensitive to throughout this process, and that just in the statement is kind of we have to look at what's a great version of, of, you know, just three flavors of ice cream. And maybe not an entire rainbow of ice cream, but something that reflects that we can see where people are at right now.
Yeah, thank you. I think that's a good analogy. We can't have all the flavors of ice cream all the time. And Vice Mayor, please, go ahead.
Thank you. So I want to focus on something that Councilmember Shawalter said. When I went into this exercise, I had a very practical or functional view, I guess, of what a mission statement should be. I agree fundamentally, we provide core and essential services like public safety and public works. And, you know, really basic things that are expected of any city. And I really wasn't comfortable with pursuing a mission statement that didn't really reflect that reality. But one thing that really resonated with me was a remark that Bruce Tarney made. And that's sort of thinking about two different components of the city. One is the operations that, you know, yield the core services that are expected by our residents. And then there's, I think what he calls sort of a, an R and D component. I feel like all of these are fairly appropriately categorized in that second part of what a city does. The things that we do, you know, beyond just provide for the public works, right? Maintaining infrastructure, sort of the, maybe the major thematic goals that we're going to talk about later on. The, the nice things that are not necessarily expected, you know, by, as a regular operational component of a municipality, but instead, you know, community goals or council goals that help make this a really desirable place to live. Honestly, I think all of these are functionally equivalent. I don't think any one of these will change our policymaking or the expectations of the community in any way. So I don't really, they're all fine. I think what would be more interesting is making sure that the mission statement reflects the key thing that a city does, which is provide those essential services. And if we want to include some of the broader community goals, any of these I think will be fine. Unless you can persuade me that any one of these words will yield a different policy outcome.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think that thinking about the purpose in terms of those, the what we, what we provide, so those core services in service of the outcomes that we're looking to support. You know, I think the idea here is that if we agree on that the mission as that driving force behind what your focus is internally, it's, it's beyond, it's sort of like, we all agree that the core services are there. And then what is the, those are in service of what? And so that, I think those are some of the words that are on the page. But we, yeah, so we'll definitely continue this conversation. But let's go to Councilmember Hicks. And then we'll do a final, final round on that number four, if anyone has any additional feedback.
So I just wanted to engage a little bit on the, this idea of core services because maybe it's my background as a city planner, but I would never, if I'm thinking of, you know, like when I, my husband and I were looking for a place to live, it had to be generally in this area. Or when I'm thinking about whether to stay in a community, we don't talk about core services. I mean, of course I need my garbage taken out. I'm not going to move to a city with piles of garbage on the street. Eventually I do notice the core services. But to me, it's more what Councilmember Matichak was talking about. It's things like if, if this, if we had, if it was safe here, you know, relatively good police force and the garbage was picked up, but there were no street trees or, or few parks or I could name any other, any number of other physical, no, you know, no streets that were walkable. I wouldn't move here. You know, I wouldn't move here unless I was desperate and the, the housing was super cheap. I, I see the core thing the city does is land use and making a livable place that we want to be in. I also have always chosen to live in cities that are somewhat mixed income. And so equity is an important, an important value for me as well. But I, I don't, I don't see those core services as the only thing or the most important thing that the city does. In fact, honestly, I'd be willing to suffer through some marginal provision of services if, if everything else was wonderful. And, well, I'll, I'll leave it there.
Thank you, Councilmember Hicks. And I see Vice Mayor Ramirez responding. And was that Mayor Kameh waving?
Yeah, Ms. Blackford, I, you know, I, there's still many hands and I think I'm just, you know, we're at 110. I know we're trying to, to end at 140. So I'd love for City Manager McCarthy maybe to provide some overall context to what the view from the city was in terms of, you know, these, these mission statements. If she could interject, please, I think that'd be helpful.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, so the mission really is just kind of that guiding statement that talks about what the city does. You all have that. And I think today wasn't really supposed to be intended to really focus on all of the words because we really were trying to just get the feel for what you all thought. And some of these words came from when Civic Maker spoke to all of you. And so I think it was really just trying to evoke really the intent behind the words and how it would be put together for the overarching mission of what the organization does for our residents and businesses and everyone here. So I think we definitely have some time to get through this and we'll also hear from the community and staff so that we can come up with something. But I definitely hear the concerns and I think that we have enough to, to move on and work on this over the next few months, if, if that is okay with everyone.
Yeah, and I'll just add that, you know, the feedback you're giving exactly is exactly the kind of feedback we want to hear at this point. We're at the very beginning of this process. I think there's also an interesting piece of this conversation is that the mission oftentimes for organizations is much more focused on, on operational execution to make sure that there is that line of sight for every single staff member to make sure that the policy direction is being implemented in the spirit of why it was passed. So it may be that, that city council, and not all city councils will do a mission in their strategic planning process. It's something that, that, that staff has identified that they want to do and to at least revisit the, the mission that as it currently exists. We may tweak that one. We may go more haw-haw on, on something that's totally different. But here, the feedback you shared today is exactly what we needed to put into the hopper, as it were, of all the input that we're going to get to, to get to the next point, which is mid-March when we, we got, it started getting more specific. So I think, you know, we're good right now. We, we should move on to our last segment here, which is the strategic priorities. We are available. I know some of you have already emailed me. If you have additional thoughts after this meeting, please feel free. My, my inbox is always open. So with that, we'll move on to our final section here. And that is on strategic priorities. The strategic priorities, as I've mentioned, are what falls out of the, the vision statement. What are the, the primary areas of focus that the organization feels like it needs to do to actualize that longer-term vision? The top areas of focus to achieve the vision, as this definition says. This maps pretty closely to your current major goals. I think that there is an interest from staff and, and I, I look forward to this conversation with you all too to potentially reframe how we talk about this in a final roadmap. Don't only get into that today, but we do want to revisit the, the substance of the current goals, major goals, and see if there's anything that you want to share right now to go into that hopper as far as what the, the revision to the, the goal slash strategic priorities will be. So we asked you for your feedback. I know that there was a little bit of confusion around some of the, the ranking we did. And in the end, that was helpful for us to, to sort of make you all choose which specific goal here you thought is extremely important. So what we're seeing here is a spread of, of where, where green being the, the most important and red being the least important as ranked by you all. The, the, the first goal of, of community for all continues to be the, seemingly the most important to you all. And transportation, I think, is the one that where there's, there's the most kind of question. I, I will say that overall, all council members said that each of the current goals is very important. We're going to share on the next two slides some potential additions, removals or changes. But overall, the, what we heard from you is that the current major goals are still really important priorities and that they've been discussed over a long period of time. And, and, you know, that, that you've all landed on, on some agreement around. So I think that's important context for us as we share these next two slides about some of the ways we can change them. And so we're going to share those two slides and then just get some, some conversation or some feedback from, from you all about what the other council members have shared and so that we can incorporate that into the next round of revision of the strategic priority areas or major goals. Okay, the first slide here we have is some suggestions that council members had on adding priority areas or goals and removing priorities. These were all shared individually once, so there wasn't really any consensus around these. So I think that's also important to note. There, there was no sort of big unanimous, let's add this new priority. And these were all just individual suggestions. One potential priority to add is emergency preparedness and response. Another is a more internal-facing priority around enhancing the effectiveness and efficiency of city operations in order to provide essential services, potentially adding a priority around economic development. And then someone said maybe health and wellbeing. A few suggestions around removing priorities, the environmental sustainability goal. Someone felt that we're achieving that. Similarly to the transportation-related goal that some of the aggressive CIP program work, something that helping you all to meet that goal. And then there's also a sense from one person that, that one council member that has a goal, much has already been done. And then finally, changes. There were two council members that both suggested that quality of life and environmental sustainability could be split into two separate goals. Because while related, there's not always direct overlap, which can be kind of confusing sometimes for planning in the strategic direction that the council lays out year over year. And then someone else suggested the change transportation goal to include lessons learned from the pandemic. I might suggest that this might be more at the, the project level rather than necessarily revising the whole goal, but nonetheless wanted to share. And then someone else noted there is overlap between the community and housing goals. So with that, wanted to take probably maybe 10 minutes here, tops, to just hear any feedback from, from you after seeing what other council members shared about potential revisions to the, the major goals or strategic priority areas. Again, we're not making any decisions today. We will be doing the community engagement and staff conversation to get thoughts from them as well. But this is, you know, this is an important time to, for, to hear your feedback. So I saw Councilmember Lieber's hand first. What's to do, go around and hear from everybody? And so Councilmember Lieber, start with you.
Thanks. Well, I think that, I, I hope it's an isolated viewpoint that we should take housing or sustainability out of our major goals because I, I think we're just getting, getting started there. And I do think it's going to be important in the next stages to really flesh out what we're talking about when we talk about core services. And I think that things like tree cover and the sustainability initiatives are our core services. So I'm not just looking at core services as garbage and sweeping the streets and filling a pothole. It's, it's really protecting us against the, the future bad things that can happen through climate collapse and the future bad things that can happen if we don't have essential workers here because we don't have the housing. So I think as we go into the next steps, really fleshing out what do we think is essential? And, and this exercise for me where we prioritize things was a bit difficult because the community item and the housing item had a lot of overlap. And so I think that housing might have suffered through that. And it was really hard to assign a full point, five, you know, five points to only one thing. And I think that gave the other thing short. And I think that gave the other thing short shrift. And I think that we need to look at continuing our work in areas where we already have depth is really important.
Great, thank you. Vice Mayor Ramirez, how about you go next?
Thank you. So I think the two overriding considerations for me. At first is, we have a very solid work plan that I don't think we're quite close to achieving. And so I'm reluctant to do a lot of new work that I think, you know, at best will delay our existing work plan and result in another two years of really struggling to get a lot of our goals completed. You know, so I guess another way of thinking about that is the existing work plan, it's pretty nicely under the existing goals. And it's hard for me to want to deviate from that substantially unless we do something difficult, like say, we're no longer going to pursue some of the existing items in our work plan. And I think the other thing is, I'll be probably myopically focused on this, but having goals that are meaningful and achievable, I think, is really important to me. It's nice to say, you know, improve the affordability of housing or something very high-level and broad. I don't think that's a meaningful goal, because all of us at the conclusion of the two-year cycle will say, you know, we'll have different opinions about whether we've achieved or how much progress we made on that goal. So if we change one thing, I think it's, you know, define goals that include metrics, you know, that we can measure and say, and have, you know, something close to unanimity, right? That at the conclusion of the two-year cycle, we've been able to achieve, you know, a good amount of this goal, or we've made no progress, and we might need to course correct. So those are my quick thoughts.
Great, thank you for, you know, not only comment on the goals, but the sort of how the goals are framed. I think that's a, you know, good perspective that as well. Councilmember Matachuk.
Thank you. And I have a question, and then I also have some comments. And the question is, in the examples from other cities that were shared, they often had six priorities.
Our best recommendations, you know, we recommend you have no more than four to five. But, you know, getting the consensus and sometimes, you know, it becomes a... And that's where I think the conversation around core services and capacity becomes really, really important. So I don't want to get too far down that conversation or make that decision right now. But there is a real need to make sure that this strategic roadmap is as focused as it can be and as realistic as it can be. So limiting the core focus area, i.e. strategic priorities or major goals, becomes one leverage point to be able to do that. We'll just use the ice cream analogy again. You can't have all the flavors all the time. So thank you for that observation, and it's something that, you know, it comes up in every planning process. So, City Manager McCarthy, do you want to speak to that as well?
Yes, thank you. I would just say, one of the things that we have right now in our work plan, so we have the overarching goals, which are written more like really long sentences with a lot of adjectives in them and almost like, not necessarily projects, but you might want to think about more pithy, one to two words for the goals, because we have, if you recall, in the work plan, so we have the four major goals, and then there's this fifth category, which is kind of a catch-all of tons of projects that don't necessarily fit neatly in the other four. And so I do think you could potentially have maybe five. There's probably a lot of items in there that might be under like a government-for-all category or government operations or just something like that, because it's general work that doesn't necessarily fit in those items. So I just kind of wanted to throw that out for you, not for us to decide today, but I think that's generally where a lot of organizations kind of think about their strategic priorities in those. Sorry, my lights went off. They've been going on and off all day. Just so that it's not necessarily long sentences that you have to think about, but rather maybe council could consider just the top priorities in those buckets, and then it's all the projects and initiatives that fall under them. So just another way of looking at it.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that.
So since I've been on council, so my comments, since I've been on council, we started with three goals, and then we expanded to four. So I was a little bit nervous about going to more than that, because I appreciate focus in getting things done. But I have been a little bit concerned that the, something that's really important to me and I think many members of the community is the quality of life and the livability of our city. And having that combined with sustainability, I feel like it's not getting as much attention as it should. And so I would absolutely like to see that broken out separately. And the other one that I didn't think about when I was providing my input before this session, I guess because I was thinking it was probably a given, but maybe it needs to be a priority, and that is recovery from COVID. And it might not be, you know, a 10-year type of thing. Hopefully, we can recover much more quickly than that. But it is a huge priority to help our residents and our small businesses recover from COVID. Thanks.
Yeah. Councilmember Hicks.
So I have to say, I struggle with this part of the exercise. And the, and some of the comments previous council members have made embody kind of the reasons I struggle. I see, well, I see these almost more as aspirations. You know, these four so-called goals. You know, the first one, although you summarized it as community, I usually focus on the words in that sentence of vulnerable populations. So, or the one, you know, where we're providing housing or where we're addressing sustainability. I honestly don't think within my lifetime we're going to complete any of them or transportation. You know, so I'm hesitant to throw any of them under the bus. They don't seem to be... I imagine, and it would be a fun exercise to look at what, you know, 50 years ago, what were the goals of the city councilor? Were we even making them in that same way? I imagine they were something like, actually, I just read the book on the history of Mountain View. Seventy-five years ago, it would be something like, build our first library. Then we'd build it, and we'd be done. And we wouldn't, nobody would say, no, we have to keep that on the list. Whereas they seem to have changed into something very different. And so although I, and that's where I struggle, because I don't want to get rid of aspirations. I don't think we've finished sustainability, addressing climate change. But I also struggled with them then as, like, we were asked to put three under each one. And it seems like that's not, not maybe the best way to organize work. I'll give one example is the addressing the needs of vulnerable communities, which is the first goal. And then the other goal is housing needs. And honestly, when I talk to people from so-called vulnerable communities, most of their needs are housing needs. So then I'm thinking, can I put three housing needs under vulnerable communities and three under housing as well? And so to me, it seems, and that's what I did. It seems like maybe not, maybe not the best way of tackling what we're, tackling what we're trying to achieve. We're not naming the main things we want to get done. And then figuring out how to do them. I realized that putting only three under each category is imperative, maybe to make sure certain segments of the staff are not overloaded. But if we really think we need that much, for my example being housing, that much housing, maybe we need to hire more staff in that area. And then lastly, before I talk too much, I'll say I agree with Councilmember Matachuk said about, when I talk to the community, much of what the community wants are livability-related goals. And I think overlapping that with sustainability, which I think are things more like, I'm thinking of cutting our carbon footprint. I think those are really two distinct things.
Thank you. Appreciate the feedback on the format and intersectionality of goals and, you know, and the specific content. So duly noted. Councilmember Avikoga.
Thank you. Actually, Councilmember Hicks mentioned what, a lot of what I was thinking. I've been through this exercise, I think, probably six times, and it's evolved over time. And I struggled between, you know, the original, when we did this earlier on, it was like more specific goals that we could achieve within a year or two years' time versus now, the last six, at least six years, or at least, yeah, since I've been back, it's been pretty much the same, you know, housing, transportation, sustainability. Then we've added that fourth one in the last four years. But they're big goals or topic areas that we, you know, are not going to be able to ever achieve in two years. So how do we like, but then there's this hesitation to drop one of those, to add something else. But there, like, there are things, I think, that are more timely, like at this moment in time. And yet we, and, you know, example would be like health and wellness. Last year, we added youth mental health. You know, we talked about tobacco smoke, banning tobacco smoke. But because it don't fit in our four goal areas, it's been hard to incorporate them into our work. So how do we do that? How do we be more nimble and flexible to be more timely on issues that come up? But then not lose these, you know, bigger overarching areas that we know we just need to continue to work on. So do we need to, like, within transportation, get more granular or sustainability? Like, do we just, you know, work on one area, just say, building decarbonization, just so that we can actually have, you know, measurable achievements in the two-year timeframe?
Got it. Thank you. Also very helpful. Councilmember Shawalter, do you have anything to share?
Yeah, a couple things. First of all, I'd like to, I think we do need to add response to COVID. I mean, when I look back at what the council has done in the last two years or the last year and a half, that's, that's most of what has been done, and that's appropriate. That's what we need to do. So I think it's crazy not to have that on the list. So I'd like to have that added as, you know, as, I don't know what the exact words would be, but basically, response to COVID. And then I think that we have a policy decision to make here about whether or not we want these goals to be aspirational subject areas like housing, increasing housing, transportation, and sustainability, which we all know we'll be working on for the rest of our lives. Or we want to say, you know, like, in the next two years, we want to increase the housing supply by X number of units. And, you know, or sustainability, we want to reduce our, our community carbon footprint by, you know, X number of tons. I mean, what, you know, I think we have a policy decision that we really should be sort of discreetly discussing here about what we want to do to go forward. And I just want to add, in the discussion of climate protection and sustainability, we do need to remember that we are a shoreline city, and we need to also be pushing forward on sea level rise protection. And I know that's in the works. We have, the Public Works is redoing our report on that, that came out late in 2012. But that is something we will have to do as well as thus reducing our GHG emissions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think we haven't heard from Mayor Kamay, and that'll be our last on this section we'll wrap up.
Great, thanks. So a couple different thoughts. One, in terms of the prioritization of the priorities. I mean, I think a council member discussed this earlier on in their comments. And I think, you know, these are the priorities, because you would hope that they are all of equal importance. So I also found it difficult when we were doing this survey on, you know, having to pick and choose what was number one. The four goals are the four goals, because those are the most important things that we're doing. So, you know, that was just the sentiment that I had, and I think I added those in the comments of the survey. And so, and one of the things I've been reflecting on is we have four goals that are quite lengthy. And I think it's lengthy because we're trying to squeeze everything we can into them to make sure we kind of make the most of what the priority goal is. And I wonder if it might be kind of the flexibit, to speak to the flexibility that some of my colleagues have mentioned, would it make more sense to kind of, to have the goals be a little bit more broad? You know, community for all. And then the goals can go, and the projects can go under, you know, community for all. Perhaps it could be, you know, we're talking about recovery, so maybe we can have a goal that's about community vitality, you know, and we could put sustainability under there, we could put recovery efforts under there. I think there are ways where, where if we kind of shorten the language of our four calls to be a little bit more of like an umbrella term, that we will be able to find more ways to kind of fit the different projects or take on things that come up, you know, mid-year, like happened in 2020. And so that would be the comments that I have.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you all. So we do need to move on, because we are about four minutes before when we wanted to wrap up here. So we will do a quick kind of reflection. I do want to thank you all for that very thoughtful feedback. I think both the feedback on the potential structure, revising some of the way that the goals are structured right now is incredibly helpful, and I look forward to bringing that already to staff and getting their inputs on that, because I think you suggest a couple of ways that could just bring a lot of clarity to a new roadmap to, yeah, we'll make sure that everyone's working together and moving in the right direction together. So thank you for that. What we'd like to do now is just do a quick reflection period, and Kristelle will lead us in that.
Thank you, Lawrence.
And let me move to the next slide for you. There we go.
Yeah, so we, we had 15 minutes for this wrap-up, but at this point, we only have four, so we'll do what we can. But we just wanted to really quickly, or just ask you to do a lightning round on any aha moments that you had. Key takeaways. What was most sort of eye-opening for you in this process that you want to kind of carry forward? We can start with Avikoga, just kind of council member, since you had your hand up from the last round. Unless you don't want to start.
I'm sorry, I never lowered it. But I just actually look forward to the community staff engagement. As I was reflecting on years past, we probably haven't done a thorough process there. So this is a great opportunity to do that. Thanks.
Thank you. And Councilmember Hicks.
Okay, well, that's way too close, Councilmember Avikoga, to what I was going to say. Like, I'm just repeating it. I think one of the most refreshing things for me was to hear all the comments from the members of the public, and I look forward to continuing to hear that, because, and maybe this is self-centered of me, many of the things that they wanted for the community are the same as the things that I want. So I was very happy to hear that. I also liked hearing feedback from the other council members through the vision statement that you all compiled. And I could say more, but we were encouraged to stay short. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor Ramirez, go ahead.
Thank you. I think the key takeaway for me is, I'm a little surprised by, I think, two schools of thought about how to approach this. You know, I'm pretty strongly in team, let's very clearly define our goals, make them measurable, and then report back to the community two years later, here's the progress that we've made. But there's, you know, a competing school of thought that I think is equally valid in, you know, aspirational thematic goals. And, you know, you're not necessarily looking for, you know, at the end of the cycle, we've completed 60%, you know? And I think those are very fundamentally different ways of approaching this. And I'm hopeful that, you know, we could have a robust conversation about which direction we want to go, that we want to utilize.
Great, thank you so much. And I'll just say quickly that I do think that there is a way that we blend those, that we've done before. So next discussion, we can get into that. And Councilmember Lieber.
Well, I think it's really heartening to me to hear the support on council and also the community for really fully fleshing out what we've already bitten off in terms of the sustainability and housing and other objectives. And I think it was Alex Brown who mentioned in this process, if we can leverage the community organizations that we have and the community efforts that are out there. I think over the years, we've developed a very sophisticated cadre of community advocates. and really utilizing that as a part of the process.
Thank you, thank you so much. And Mayor Kame.
Thank you. So one of the things that I appreciated was that civic makers had a timeline of outreach to our multilegal community and that there was already thought there. I think that that's really important and pretty critical. And another piece of feedback that I'd like to give is when, when the city was taking feedback on our police relations, we had an anonymous way for people to provide that feedback. And I think that as we're going forward with the strategic planning process, we're going to, it sounds like civic makers will have a very robust way to do that and there's going to be quite a bit of communication. But for those who may want to provide feedback, you know, anonymously, I think that it would also be nice to have that. And I know that we have the website that the city has created and I think as much as possible, being able to share that as a resource and perhaps take feedback from the website could also be another way for people to feel comfortable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Kame. And we will be adding a virtual comment card that is contact form, contact information optional. So there will be that anonymous method. Councilmember Madachuk.
Thanks. I guess I do want to talk a little bit about input from the community. What's really important to me is to make sure we have visibility into resident input. I know there have been online tools used in the past and I've had my concerns about those because there is no way to verify that it's residents that are providing input. And while input from others is also important, I do want to make sure I have that visibility into for the people who live here, what are their thoughts? Thanks.
Thank you. We do have some fields on our virtual comment card that address those concerns. Thank you for that. Does anyone else have any closing comments, reflections? Councilmember Sher Walter, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess one of the things that has struck me this time and the previous times I've taken part in this at House, is how there really is a shared vision of what's important on this council and in our community. You know, nobody's really argued very hard that, that any of the objectives we have aren't appropriate. Everybody feels that they matter and I think that's really a good, you know, that, that cohesiveness is really important. And I also am really pleased to see that we're going to have a rigorous public participation process. And I think that we need to get the scheduling for the focus groups and the workshops that are going to be occurring, it sounds like in the next, the next three or four weeks, out to the public so they can plan to participate ASAP.
Yes, thank you. We are on it. And we're also very excited to have this opportunity to do this community engagement. Any, any other reflections? I think we, all righty, all right, then we'll move on to, thank you for sharing your reflections on the community engagement at that stage as well. Lawrence, do you want to just close us out?
Yeah, just really briefly thank you again for this honest and, you know, focused conversation about our strategic roadmap process. I know that all the staff we've been working with are really eager to get this underway and to finally have this official kickoff with all of you. Means that we're going to be able to move really quickly and we're going to ask a lot of you in this process, a lot of staff and a lot of community, but that's going to, the word that some of you use is being robust is really what we're trying to do and just make sure that this is stakeholder driven and it, as much as possible incorporates that stakeholder feedback and speaks to that stakeholder input so that there's as broad alignment as possible. That's, that's why we're here and it's really an honor to be here and we look so forward to continue to work with you. So with that, I don't know, Kimber, if you, City Manager McCarthy, if you have any closing thoughts or we'll just pass it back to Mayor Kame. Great, thank you for your time this morning. We'll stick around and listen to the public comments in case there's anything else that we can incorporate into this, our notes from this day.
Great, thank you. So I couldn't see, so I'm assuming City Manager McCarthy, you didn't have any closing comments? All right. So we actually took public comment three times, Lawrence. We took it under item three and then before each of the discussion items. So there isn't any more public comment, at least for today. And so actually, we're just going to adjourn the meeting is what I have next on our agenda. So this meeting is adjourned at 1:45 PM. I want to thank all my colleagues for sticking in for a really long day and for the public who joined us, really appreciate it and we will see you all the ninth, right? No, the eleventh. All right, bye.